Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will come to order, please. Let's call the roll and establish a quorum.
Councilmember Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Shenier.
Here.
Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Warren will be absent.
Thank you very much. We do have a quorum established tonight. Let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, led tonight by City Attorney Matt Ruyak. Here you go. Come on. Oh, we do have a Boy Scout troop. Come on, you guys. Boy Scout troop, come on up with Mr. Ruyak, will ya? Come on.
Matt, that's pretty much a Boy Scout, though.
And Matt, you're a Boy Scout. Come on, we're gonna do it all together.
Only you knew.
Here we go. Right up to the mic, right up here, gentlemen.
In the middle.
There you go. Okay. Are you ready with the city attorney? Let's go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Scouts. Welcome to the City Council meeting. Welcome to everybody. We begin today, we have no special presentations, so let us begin with public testimony on items not on the agenda. I understand that we have ten speakers.
Yes, I have ten speakers for items not on the agenda. The first is David Guerrero, then Pat Sawyer-Handley, and then Jane Wall.
Okay, everyone, line up, please. You got two minutes. Please, welcome.
Hello, good afternoon. Just wanted to bring attention to the council. We are having opening day parade for Natomas Youth Baseball and Natomas Fast Pitch Softball. It's been more than twenty years has passed since the last event, put together by Richard Sanders, Vincent Morales, and George Alisar. It's gonna be a huge event for our community in North Gate, Gardenland, Natomas. We're going with the hashtag NatomasTogether. I want to thank Councilmember Jeff Harris for his support of the parade and his continued support of North Gate, Gardenland, and South Natomas Community. Councilperson Ashby for her support in Natomas Youth Baseball. The parade is Saturday, March 10th, 9 till 1:00 p.m. We start at Smythe Elementary, march down North Gate Boulevard, and end at Rio Tiara. In the parade, hopefully everybody can come out. You're gonna have the color guard from Grant to Grant Drumline, Grant Pacers, Fire Truck, Natoma Soccer Club's gonna come out, Gardenland and North Gate Neighborhood Association's coming out. And we're gonna end at Rio Tiara Junior High School. We're gonna have a bounce house, face painting. We're gonna have booths, Natoma School Foundation, Victory Outreach, Twin Rivers Unified School District, the Police Services, Family Engagement, again, the Gardenland and North Gate Neighborhood Association Stand for Settlement, Youth Parks, Community Enrichment will be out there with the Teen Services for WIOA, Workforce Innovation Opportunity, Primetime Team, Landscape and Learning. So I'd like to invite all of the council to come out, and Mayor, for you to come out, and also in the state of the city. You mentioned North Gate Boulevard. That was great. It's still on the burner.
It did?
It did.
So March what again?
March 10th.
I am.
I'm gonna reschedule.
I'm gonna try. I'll do my very best. I love the little league openings, absolutely.
Hopefully you see everybody out there. And again, thank you for your continuous support of the city for South Natomas, and Councilman Jeff Harris. Thank you.
Well, thank you. All the adults who volunteer to make these wonderful experiences for kids happen, you know, you don't get enough thanks, really. It's, I know, a labor of love, but it's what makes the community go here. And Jeff?
May I make a comment?
Of course.
So this is actually a really big deal for Natomas, South Natomas, Gardenland, North Gate community. They haven't had the opportunity to celebrate like this for over two decades, and they've pulled out all the stops. Everybody's gonna be there. I'm really looking forward to it, so I hope you all can come out. Again, it's Saturday, March 10th. Starts at 9:00 a.m. in the morning at Smythe Academy, and marches up North Gate to Rio Tiara Junior High School. It's gonna be a great event. So David, thanks for your efforts. David, by the way, is my Parks Commissioner, and has done a great job in his community in helping with park cleanups and events, so a lot of community pride about to happen in North Gate.
Thank you. I brought some flyers.
Yes.
If I can. I just wanted to say, too, that this is really exciting. My own son played in Natomas Youth Pony at Rio Tiara, and my husband coached, and we had such a wonderful experience. This is a cool time, and I love the hashtag NatomasTogether for this because this league, the boundaries of this league include my district, and Jeff's district, and Councilmember Hanson's district. So the kids come from all over Natomas, but they're physically playing located in District 3 at Rio Tiara, which is a field that Steve Kohn and I worked hard to get upgraded recently a couple of years ago, and it's just so exciting. But, and I'm really happy for you, David, and George, and Angie, and Richard, and everybody who's worked hard on this, but I think it just needs to be publicly said, it's not easy to do a parade down North Gate Boulevard. That is a major thoroughfare, and Councilmember Harris went to bat for Youth Pony on this, and his staff even, they went extraordinary lengths to make sure that city staff knew that he was supportive, and we were supportive, and that we would be working together to make sure it was a success. So these folks, George, and David, and Angie, and Richard, all worked really hard to bring it together, but you're lucky to have Councilmember Harris sitting in the seat because he got you across the finish line, and it's gonna be a really fun day. I hope the mayor can come out. It's gonna be really nice.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Fabulous.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it, David.
Our next speaker is Pat Sawyer-Handley, and then Jane Wall.
Pat.
Yeah, hi, City Council members. I am Pat Sawyer-Handley, President of the Friends of the North Sacramento Hagenwood Library. We are asking your support for the purchase of a building near or on Del Paso Boulevard. We hope that this purchase by the city would create a gem of a library in District 2, a destination library that makes the community and the city proud, a centerpiece for the people of North Sacramento. D2 is one of the lowest-income areas in Sacramento. A low educational attainment plagues the area. We need a great library. It is not a luxury for the 8,000 people that patrons that go to the library each month. They go to what I call a dinky library. The D2 area is actually a literary and educational desert. No junior college is there. There is no exemplary library. I believe that the funds are available through some creative funding. We can create a jewel of a library. Here's kinda some options, but your help is needed, possibly with the sale of the SHRA buildings. That money could go to fund the library. Part of the $500,000 that you graciously gave North Sac that Councilman Warren will be distributing. Also, another possibility are the fees from the marijuana production and sale. We have forty percent of the outlets that will be located in the city in our district, so I believe there might be funds available there. We need to really investigate corporate donations. There are some possibilities from some banks that do support libraries. Mayor Steinberg.
It's just about it, but why don't you conclude? Let's make this happen, by the way.
Right, that's my point.
Okay.
But maybe your help with the, finding some state funding. I know that in South Natomas, there was some state funding, and I'm trying to get an appointment to see you.
Okay, Pat.
I see Hannah Carver for that.
Oh, and she is a very strong supporter.
I'm a very strong supporter. I know Councilmember Warren as well, something we've been talking about. Let's talk, okay? I'm glad you came forward.
Yeah, I tried to get a meeting with you, but it didn't work out. I don't know, I was to your underlings. Anyway.
Hey.
We do have...
They're better than me, actually.
No.
Okay, we gotta, we gotta move on. We got twenty speakers.
Yeah, I'll just real quick, that we have over 600 petitions from community members, and I'll get into the clerk, and I'd like them recorded, and I wanna thank all the people that helped with that.
We'll, we'll...
Thank you for your time.
We'll follow up with you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jane Wall, then Gregory Glavvenovich, and then Karen Corbs.
Hello, Councilmembers. My name is Jane Whale, and I'm a member of the Woodlake Neighborhood Association in North Sacramento D2. I am here to speak on behalf of the need for a new library. I'm a library supporter, and have been inside other area libraries such as Arcade, Arndemic in North and South Natomas, and it occurs to me that our library in our community has been overlooked. Why can't we have a spacious and inviting library with a community meeting room, more parking spaces, more books? We need more space for special programs to enliven library services, and I'm glad to hear that we may very well have your support, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. You did.
Next speaker is Gregory Glavvenovich, and then Karen Corbs.
Glavvenovich.
The Buddha said, "If you don't want to be ugly in your next lifetime, then do not get angry in this one." Does that show up there? Let's see. Didn't have time to type it out. The talk is on lookism. People are judged according to how they look. If you got the Wall Street Journal under your arm, whether or not your triceps muscles flabby, if you're a man, if your socks don't match, you will be judged negatively and thought you're not worth talking to by women. But women can get away with not having their socks matched, if it's fashionable. I can't read that far. Let's see. We finished with that. Page two. "I said good morning..." Can we skip this? "I said good morning to a lady, and she ignored me." I noticed this twenty years ago. Ladies are ignoring men downtown, and I'm thinking to myself, I'm just paying for the sins of another man. Let's see. Where's page three? Where's page four? So in a restaurant, owners are hiring good-looking, beautiful waitresses, waiters, cashiers. They don't want to hire ugly people because they don't want to scare away the customers. People end up on welfare because the teachers are not, in grammar school, they're not calling people who raise their hand if they're not...
Glavven, your time is up, okay? That's it. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
At twenty seconds?
No, I'm sorry. Nope, time is up now. Okay? Thank you. We're busy, busy group of people here, okay? Thank you. Time is up.
Next speaker is Karen Corbs, and then Chris Rogers.
My name is Karen Corbs, and I've lived in Sacramento for 22 years. I love my neighborhood, my neighbors, and my local businesses. I do not love what drug addicts and dealers under the freeway along the WX corridor are doing to my community. As you can see from my photos, these are neat, there are needles everywhere, used needles that were used by heroin and meth addicts that are now left on the streets for us to see. Mr. Mayor, we don't have a homeless crisis, we have an illegal drug epidemic. It's the number-one reason homeless addicts do not accept the many services offered by our wonderful Homeless Impact Team, because they'd have to give up their drugs. Sacramento PD is doing the best they can, but we don't have a narcotics enforcement team anymore. How are we ever going to effectively get drugs off the streets this way? Drug dealers deliver to addicts at the WX underpass by bikes, cars, and campers. When one dealer is arrested, another shows up to take their place, and what is left on our streets? Trash, used needles, exposed needles, urine, feces, and more. Our police and the Homeless Impact Team are understaffed and overwhelmed. According to Sacramento B, we have one of the lowest police officer-to-resident ratios in the state. That's 1.32 officers per 1,000 residents. That's horrifying. Due to the fallout of Props 47 and 57, their work has gotten even harder. These propositions have resulted in more drugs on our streets than ever before. When felonies are now misdemeanors, drug dealers and addicts realize they will never go to jail under the current system. When will I be able to wake up and not hear that a neighbor's car has been broken into, or a drug addict hasn't tried to break into a friend's backyard? When will I be able to go to bed at night and not hear police cars racing down Freeport Boulevard, Land Park Drive, or Riverside, and helicopters hovering over my house? This is not the same neighborhood where I have raised my child. On multiple occasions, my seventeen-year-old son has had to witness heroin addicts shooting up in their arms, legs, and feet while he sits at a red light at Broadway and Land Park Drive.
Need you to wrap it up, please.
He has also seen them passed out and using our streets as a bathroom. Is this the Sacramento you want our kids living in?
No.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, let's make our city a place where we can call home, not a place that drug dealers and addicts call home. I thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. We take it very seriously. Appreciate it. Next.
Hello. This is Jonathan. He is an example of the homeless population addicted to drugs in our city, and let me tell you a bit about him. He arrived in the Broadway Riverside area about two years ago, and he has become a regular on our streets. We believe he is mentally ill. He can be confrontationally ill at people sometimes, and at other times, he can be calm and kind. People have seen him having conversations with invisible people in parking lots. We know he's well-fed. Jonathan panhandles in front of Target, Tower Theater, and Starbucks. People give generously to him, and local businesses and kind-hearted people also bring him food. We know he is a drug addict. As you can see from the photos, he has plenty of needles and shoots in public places in front of children with no self-awareness. Drug dealers know he is a frequent flyer and are able to keep him supplied. He stands in front of businesses in a drug-induced stupor and passes out next to main streets like Broadway and Land Park Drive to sleep. We know Jonathan and many like him have been offered services by the police over and over again. He doesn't trust officers and will never accept help from them. As long as he can get money, food, and drugs, he has no motivation to accept help. There does seem to be a group who do not seem to know Jonathan, on-the-street mental health outreach professionals. He has been here for at least two years, living like this. He is a beacon to others to come to Sacramento. If our city and county is paying an organization to help people like Jonathan, you need to take a closer look at their effectiveness. Even if they have reached out to him, their current process hasn't helped him get clean, and right now, they're failing you, our community, and Jonathan. Thank you very much.
I'm really glad you came forward, and, you know, tonight, we're gonna be discussing one aspect of our, of our strategy to combat homelessness, the triage shelter, but it's part of a much larger plan that is going to take some time, but I'd like to talk to you, and if, we'll talk about it some tonight, about the elements of that plan, so that you can agree or disagree, but at least you know...
Yes.
...that we are trying to tackle this in a comprehensive way. I appreciate and I hear your frustration, because it isn't right. You're absolutely correct, it isn't right. So stay tuned, okay? Please, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your communication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Our next two speakers are Sally Shapiro and Kristen Perry. And for the record, I wanted to announce that the public hearing item number nineteen, which is the Westlake Village Attentative Parcel Map, will be continued. Sally?
I'm Sally Shapiro. I've been involved with the art community since 1988. I have had two public bronze monuments, one at State College and one at City College. I founded two art galleries, and I would, I have, I have a proposal that I've written about developing permanent housing using the model of the wall, which is warehouse homeless loss. Of course, it would be much more modest, smaller units, but they pay a very, they pay, the most reasonable one is $354 a month, and if we had cut the size of the units in half or thirds, I mean, they're gigantic, we could charge 180 a month and have some permanent housing for the homeless, and it could be combined with, I mean, in my vision, I don't see things in terms of what is, I see things in terms of what it could be, being an artist, so my vision is with the permanent housing for the homeless, part of the building could be rented out as nightly rentals, and the homeless could learn skills in how to maintain properties and how to rent out places, become restaurateurs, do retail sales, and it would be like Grand Central for homeless individuals who could really use it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's Kristen Perry, and then Robert Copeland.
Hello, I'm Kristen. I'm in North Sacramento. I haven't been here for a few months. Unfortunately, my mother was diagnosed with terminal brain cancer over the holidays, so we had to be taking care of her. So I wanted to talk a little bit about trust-building and communication between what's going on with the homeless shelters and, you know, the neighborhoods and communities around North Sac. I just wanted to recap a little bit, that we proposed two shelters together.
I don't want to interrupt you, but this is on the agenda.
I know, I'm sorry. You know what? I was a little confused. I thought we were having a special presentation by Emily this evening to take over that.
Oh, yeah, we are, by our homeless team. If you can wait, if you don't mind, because I think you ought to hear the entire presentation, then come on up and testify.
Yeah, I had some specific questions, though. Can I ask those now, or do I wait for about...
Well, why don't you put the, quickly put the questions on the table, so that maybe they can be answered in the presentation.
Okay, that would be great. Does that need to say them here right now?
Sorry?
Does that need to say them here in front of you right now?
Hey, yeah, just, but quickly, if you would, please.
Okay, sure, of course. So the quick questions that I have is, you know, what happened to the shelters proposed on Florn in Anoke Park, and how have you aggressively looked for other locations citywide? From the frequently asked questions, the focus was supposed to be on North Sac homeless. How many North Sac homeless were housed in the shelter, or did they come, the majority come from other areas?
That'll be covered in the presentation.
Okay, wonderful. So it said it would help reduce the number of impact of unsheltered homeless in the community, but I have seen an increase of homeless at Del Paso Boulevard and other places. It also said that the shelter would definitively close in the spring of 2018, so is it going to close or not? Apparently, you're discussing on. The goal was to exit people to permanent housing, and you'd stated, however, at the end of the winter, should there be people remaining, that you would look for permanent housing or temporary shelters elsewhere? So those are my main questions, you know.
They're the right questions.
Great.
We'll have that discussion in a few minutes.
Thank you, I was confused about what was going on tonight. It had a lot going on, so hopefully we can build trust together and move forward.
We'll keep you in our prayers, okay? Sorry.
Next speaker is Robert Copeland, then Pastor Joan Louis Canard, and then Mary Larson.
With the previous speaker said, I want to hear it also at the presentation.
Good. Why don't you come up then, Robert?
But I'm not done yet.
Oh.
But there's a few things lacking in Sacramento. Housing, how can you provide the housing? And I've been hearing people at my apartment complex echoing some of the things that Fong Lee said last week at the City Council about the restrooms. What are you gonna do with the restrooms, the water fountains? That's not only gonna help the homeless population, it's gonna help everybody in Sacramento. Everybody. Because I went to Fremont Park about a couple of years ago, three ladies want to use the restroom, and they found out it was closed, and they were not, they didn't look homeless. They looked like they were well-dressed ladies. So, and some of the restrooms that are open are in bad sets, disrepair, like no lightbulb in the nighttime over South Side Park. I find that unacceptable. So what are you gonna, and also, my last point, because I can speak for like three minutes if I could, but since the rule that only two minutes here. Last Tuesday, there was a thing filed for rent control and just caused evictions for Sacramento City. Did any of the City Council know about that? I'll be working on that when the ballot measure actually comes out, you know, petitions come out on that one. Because I think that Sacramento City is not doing a job creating jobs for everybody, housing for everybody. You've seen the more, one more cater to the visitors to Sacramento, being your own people. I think that's wrong. If you do cater to the people, the residents, the visitors can come, but people that live here is first.
Next speaker is Pastor Joan Louis Canard, then Mary Larson, and then Mary E. Tappel. Pastor Joan Louis Canard?
Good evening. Mayor Steinberg, you was talking about, to me yes, last week, about a lawyer, and I didn't know you were talking to me. Were you talking to me about that?
I just, we offered to, I asked if we could provide some help to you, because you come up and, every week, and it doesn't seem like it's helping you, so I'm just wondering if we might do something, put you in touch with somebody to help you. That's, that's what I was offering.
So you can what?
To help you.
So you can do what, sir?
To help you.
All right. I need a lawyer. If you can give me a sexual harassment lawyer, I would, I would like that.
I mean, we can have somebody from our city team sit down with you and try to understand, away from the public cameras and all, what, what your issues are, and see how we might help you. We can do our best, but I just don't think, you're welcome to come up here, of course, but I'd rather do something that might be of help to you.
Could we set a time and a date for that?
We can set you up with the right person, yes, on our city team. Yes, we can. We'll do that tonight. If you'll just give us a minute, step aside, and we'll, we'll, we'll make an appointment.
Yeah, I would like to be done right away, because I have to go to work early in the morning.
I understand. Thank you, Pastor.
So who do I talk to?
Well, just, just, just wait for a moment. Chris Conlon, right here, our Assistant City Manager.
Okay.
Okay?
I want to talk to you then, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Mary Larson, and then Mary Tappel.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for letting me just say a few words. I'm a member of the Friends of the Library, and I think we've just spoken to that issue. I'm very happy to see you so enthusiastically behind. Our library is a one-room library, and we would certainly like to serve our community better with a much bigger space, so thank you, and...
Do it.
We'll be doing it.
Okay.
Next speaker is Mary Tappel, and then Timothy Gayer. Mary?
Hello. Hello, Mayor, members of the City Council. I am here once again, supporting public safety, and particularly, community policing and our police chief, Chief Daniel Hahn's role in leading it. Also, please take note for that, for public safety, and also for more equity in the community. We need the community policing to be continuously supported, and, for example, right around the current winter triage shelter, and yes, I am one of the ones who thinks it needs to stay open a longer time, particularly for, for women who have different abilities or women who have disabilities, and very much need the shelter, say, from such things as that late and very unexpected snowfall that we had yesterday. Also, I want you to understand that our current reporting for citizens, concerned citizens in the north area, living there as I have for a whole lot of years now, I've always worked with youth outreach, and I'm particularly sensitive also to women's safety along our particular public bikeways, parkways, and river parkways, and our current north-area commander is Captain Pam Seifert, and this is the first captain we've had that's female, and she's doing a very excellent job whenever I have reported for, for about the loose pit bulls around 2040 Railroad Avenue. This is only before, only before it became open as a triage shelter, and also along the bikeways near, very near there, and in, in the public parkway, American River Parkway, or in the nearby North Sacramento bikeways, they've been cleaned up by the police, the Police Impact Team. This is really important, also, it's really important for all of the community efforts, such as Captain, when he was Captain Hahn, over eight years ago, before his, his eight-year stint in Roseville, as Police City Chief of Police there, this community policing meetings, they told me, I, when I was unfortunately subject to an armed attack, I knew to lead the people away from my car, because that was just been covered in, in the community meeting. So we need that community policing. It goes back almost a decade now, at least, in my personal experience. Thank you very much, and effectiveness.
Our next speaker is Timothy Gayer, then Robert Caveness. Timothy? And I have ten more speakers for matters not on the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, and members of the City Council. My name is Robert Caveness. I represent Sister Cities Haiti and the Go Naive Sacramento Sister Cities Committee. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share our concerns about the family unity, education, and legal program. On November 20th, Acting Secretary of the DHS Elaine Duke announced a decision to terminate TPS for Haiti effectively July 22, 2019. While this provides a little bit more time for Haitian TPS beneficiaries to get their affairs in order, and to leave the United States, the only long-term to the solution for the Haitians will be passage of Representative Clark's Bill HR 4384. And that will allow beneficiaries to be granted work permits. They will be able to travel outside of the U.S. and return, and they will qualify for certain government benefits not allowed under the current status. Because of the restrictive immigration policies of the Trump administration and its position on terminating the temporary protective status for thousands of Haitians, our communities live in fear, experience anxiety, and depression. We do not desire our family or friends to go deeper underground if they feel the city is not supportive of their desire to remain in the United States. We are asking that the city of Sacramento provide designated funding for outreach to the African and Caribbean diaspora, communities providing referral, outreach, legal, and linguistic, and interpretive services. In closing, the outreach will be conducted by our culturally sensitive organizations, the NAACP, the Center for African Peace and Conflict Resolution, the Sacramento Association of Nigerians, the Sacramento Peace Committee, and the Sacramento Caribbean American Association. I encourage you to continue work on this matter, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Just a minute. Councilmember Gueda heads our, our immigration effort, the Fuel Network, has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make sure that, Mr. Cabaness, thanks for coming out here today. It's good to see you. We do have grants opening right now through the Fuel Network, and we want to make sure that you know that, and that all the other groups know that, that regardless of where you're coming from, whether you're Haitian or whatnot, any group can apply for this. It's, it's not, it's not any specific group. So any group that needs this need can apply for it, and the grants are open now. My staff, I'll have them come and meet with you here so that we make sure that, that we can get that word out. We made that announcement last week with the mayor. We had a press conference to make sure that people knew about that. And just so you know, and anyone who's watching now, the number is 916-234-3734, and they can get direct information on getting access to those grants, and making sure we apply for them now. And we also have the staff support to help you work through that application as well. And my office would be glad to help you with that.
Okay, we sure appreciate your help.
Yeah, please connect, okay?
See you again, Mr. Cabaness.
There are resources. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Edrin Dellengen, and then Betty Williams. Edrin?
Next. Oh, there's Edrin here, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Edrin Dungu. I'm the president of the Uganda, Sacramento Uganda Association, and also, I'm the vice president of the Interfaith Council of Greater Sacramento. I would like to, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share our concerns regarding the fuel, to, as the gentleman talked about, fuel program. So, this, today, we are asking that the city of Sacramento provide designated funds for outreach to the African and the Caribbean immigrants and refugees community that includes providing referrals, outreach, legal, linguistic, and interpretive services. The outreach be conducted by culturally sensitive organizations, the NAACP, the Center for African Peace and Conflict Resolution, Sacramento Peace Committee, and the other organizations as appropriate. The African diaspora and Caribbean immigrants and the refugees be afforded all the protections provided under the resolution. No, your rights, presentation be conducted within these communities by members of the MAACAC unit organization. Attorney consultation be at no cost to the clients, and that assistance be given to the families in the preparation of legal documentation.
Thank you, sir. We, so I, I'm so glad you came, and I know there are a number of other representatives tonight. Eric, Councilmember Gueda, we just want to, right, we want to work together to make sure that we are including, of course, the African and Caribbean American communities here, and that some of our, even our volunteer outreach workers, volunteers are representative of these communities, so that we are achieving, obviously, the cultural competence that's necessary to ensure that we're helping as many people as possible. So,
Thank you.
The follow-up here with either my office or Councilmember Gueda and his office is crucial, because we want to make sure that you are integrally involved in this, in this effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Betty Williams, and then James Sweeney.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and city council members.
Evening.
My name is Betty Williams, and I am the president of the Greater Sacramento NAACP, and I'm speaking on behalf of the organization. I want to give you some background on the fuel, because I know you've heard a couple of speakers, and you may hear additional speakers. But as you know, in February 2016, the city of Sacramento convened a Safe Haven Task Force. In May 2017, the city was presented with a number of recommendations that resulted in passing a resolution reaffirming the city of Sacramento's status as a sanctuary city. The recommendations authorized the general fund appropriations, appropriations of $300,000 to fund and to bring outreach, legal services, linguistics, and interpretive assistance and advocacy to the Sacramento families facing immediate threat of separation, deportation of Sacramento family unit, and education legal network of immigrations, which is the Fuel Program, was identified for receiving these funds. We're here this evening to bring forward our concerns on behalf of the motherland of African-Americans, Caribbean-American communities united, otherwise, as we call it, the MAACAC united. We are a coalition of organizations that, that has concluded or has worked with the NAACP, the Center of African-American Peace and Conflict Resolutions, and members of the Caribbean community. We believe that there is a lack of focus on the Fuel Network in, to include immigrants and refugees from Africa and Caribbean countries. We have sent, NAACP have sent representatives, our first vice president, Aliane Hassan, and has consistently raised the issues and concerns regarding the lack of inclusion and inability of the network to provide outreach to the communities. This is why we are here to ensure and to make sure that we are included, and the African communities and Caribbean communities are included in the Fuel Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good.
Next speaker is James Sweeney, and then Fong.
Okay.
Yes, Janice Wisdom.
Your name, I'm sorry, ma'am?
Janice Wisdom.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. My name is Janice Wisdom, community advocate, returning resident, homegrown Sacramentoan, graduate of Foothill High School, and president of the Sacramento Caribbean American Association. I want to thank you for this opportunity to share concerns regarding the Fuel Program and its impact on diversity and inclusion. As a diversity advocate, Vernum Myers puts it, "Diversity is being invited to the party. Inclusion is being asked to dance." We understand that Fuel oversees the implementation of various programs and goals, and plans to work with the broad coalition of community-based organizations, both faith groups and educational institutions. And we're seeking a foot in that dance. We see the problem of inclusion lumped into the word diversity, assumed to be the same thing, but that's not the case. Diversity alone doesn't include or doesn't drive inclusion. We wish to embrace the universal design of inclusion by ensuring that Sacramento fuels resources, and that they serve all of us, inclusive of the African Caribbean diaspora, and engages in our rural communities. We'd like to see the city model respect for and celebration of who we are as African Caribbean diaspora groups, devoting our talents, our livelihood, our history, in creating Sacramento into a genuinely diverse and inclusive community. So include our footsteps in, in the dance. Sacramento reports that over 20% of its residents are immigrants, and we believe that this percentage will increase significantly if our outreach strategies are proactively implemented, that recrimi, excuse me, that recognizes and understands the cultural diversities within these communities.
Thank you. Time is up.
So more importantly, more importantly,
Got to sub out, Pilis.
We're just asking that the messaging be developed to include both the immigrant and refugee members, and inclusive of the African Caribbean diaspora. Thank you.
And thank you for coming tonight. It's very important.
Our next speaker is Fong, and then Timothy Gayer.
Okay. Dr. Carter here, okay. Who's next? Who's next? Fong?
I know my name. My name's Fong. Good evening, and I'm really glad that you're considering the library for people. But I'm at the point where I'm thinking that basic needs are very important. People are still dying out there, and I know you're going to be speaking about the triage, but we're looking at how the triage has been set up, the whole person's shelter has been set up, as a way of looking at people's vulnerability. It is like getting a, having a lottery. As, when I, in the beginning of the, at the beginning of the meeting, I passed some cards around to everyone in here. The ones that have the cards, can you please just hold it up, including you people up there? I want to talk about what a lottery is. A lottery is a means of raising money by selling numbered tickets and giving prizes to the holders and numbers drawn at random. So I gave you something at random, so that we can show how people are selected based upon a lottery system of, so we're putting homeless lives like in a lottery. Therein lies the strategies of you people when they choose to, who you choose to live or die. The mere selecting the value of someone's life over another creates a system of competition and apathy. The narrative has centered around criminalization and pathologizing some who are considered undesirable, like what the other person said about lumping people in the homeless community that actually need a lot of help
Time is up, Fong.
with people who are using drugs or having mental illness. So this is still
Your time is up.
a parallel world, and so I wanted to follow up with the card that I gave you.
You're ne, yeah, you are, you're signed up for item 21, so we'll hear from you then.
I will continue.
Good.
Our next speaker
Thank you. Your time is up. Next.
Our next speaker is Timothy Gayer,
Next.
and then Fago.
No, your time's up. That's it. You come back the next time.
If whoever had the lottery, you didn't get in.
Okay, very good. Next.
Timothy Gayer, Timothy, and then Fago.
Is this the overhead projector?
Yes. Please speak, sir. Time is running.
I was just asking about the hardware here. Okay, hello, I guess, I don't even get two minutes of fame here. At any rate, I have to dispute one thing here. Firstly, there is housing available for the marginalized targeted class victims of the antisocial, anti-civil rightist, or on the poor. Not mentioned, because there's so much sponging by the beleaguered middle class, so we don't, as I recall, and it wasn't even mentioned in the last election. I never heard any, but Sanders, I think he, that's another story. In any event, I'm a socialist as well, but I can't vote, because I'm disenfranchised, as are many of the homeless people. In fact, significantly, and arbitrarily, and as targeted marginalized groups. The award-winning housing for Sacramento, national award-winning housing for Sacramento, is at the old train depot between Curtis Park and Land Park. I haven't seen anybody shooting up there. I'm not sure about the toxic cleanups. I'm not into that. I mean, it should be cleaned up. I don't think it should have happened. However, there it is. I think they start at six figures times a factor of six or something. Don't worry, you're not going to be shopping at grocery outlets.
At 15 seconds, sir.
Okay? I can see the clock. And Whole Foods is more like it, except unless you don't dress properly. And that also applies to the Sacramento Natural Foods Co. So, the point is,
Your time is up.
homelessness does exist.
Okay.
There is housing for it. It's called the Sacramento County Jail.
Next.
And you have plenty of money for that, and anybody who's here is probably getting overtime.
Next.
Next, car, car, car via.
Next speaker is Fago, and then Mackworthy.
You know, in New York, Andy Warhol gave people 15 minutes. You call this art?
Hello again, council. So, on the topic of the business districts, I found another interesting conflict of interest. It seems the same person who's the treasurer for Sacramento Steps Forward, which is supposed to be helping get people off the streets, is also the treasurer for the Downtown Partnership and the R Street Partnership. He's on the board of directors of two conflicting groups. You know, one group is saying, no, don't shelter the homeless in the churches, and the other group's supposed to be advocating for the homeless. And yet, here they, here this guy is, as a treasurer, not just on one of them, but on two business district boards, that have sent a letter saying, don't shelter the homeless in the churches, while he's on the board of directors for the exact organization that's getting funded to help create solutions to homelessness. This is a major conflict of interest. But then again, you guys are on the same board of directors, too. And so, I know, at least two of you are on the Downtown Partnership as board of directors, the Florn Road Partnership, the Stockton Boulevard Partnership, the Oak Park Partnership, you know? And this is a really, really interesting thing, because, once again, we look at all the different things that are happening in this city. We see the developers that are on these boards, getting the contracts for the developments going on in the district, near these districts. We see conflicts of interest, like the people that are supposed to be advocating for homeless rights and homeless services, on the same boards of directors that are attacking homeless services and tackling homeless rights. I'm kind of wondering how this is working, and why is it that some of these business districts have both a 501(c)(3) and a 501(c)(4), so they also have lobbying money and PAC money that they're funding into these things, while there's a city council member sitting on the same board as it?
Time is up.
I find that is a major conflict of interest that should be addressed.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Mackworthy, and then Annette Emery. Mr. Worthy?
Good afternoon, city council. Mayor, you got a problem. Most of that problem is you, because you won't step up and lead this city. Now, last Tuesday, you tabled the marijuana issue. Now, nobody come out and said, what going to be the study? What else do you want to study about drugs on black folks? You're wasting time. You could have went straight to the cannibal, to medical, and the black folks that applied, go online and start making money, because you know the state had a situation with the government. Why would you have to have two lights in the operating business? But you will only speak to parasites instead of people that are business. Only one or two parasite businesses operating through this city. Free enterprise does not get a permission for somebody to look at their books when they get ready. When you said that you was going to give people of color opportunity, I would have told you a hell no on your foot, right there. But these are young kids. Same thing Harris said, we not giving no money to go in the business. That's why I said, hell no, because you gave we enough money. You have gave way millions of dollars here. They can't sign you out, because you got the nonprofit obligation that you gave money there. So step up to the plate and say, look, city council, you going to have to do something here. And now's the time, because black people don't understand free enterprise. You going to have to teach something about free enterprise. When they said, and the neighborhood outreach, right there, nonprofit. Free enterprise is not nonprofit. Free enterprise develop nonprofit for a tax write-off, people. Wake up. I told you three or four times, Dale, give me a call. I break bread and I pay people, but you, but you need to make a move and make that. and I pay people. But you need to make a move and make that move soon, because the train coming.
Annette Emery and then Ron Elmsley.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, City Council. I'm Annette Emery. I'm president of the Gardeland Northgate Neighborhood Association. David Grere already did a really wonderful presentation on the March 10th parade. And I just do really want to thank the city for supporting this. Gardeland Northgate area of South Natomas is basically totally forgotten. People have no idea really what it is. And this be a chance to bring people in and start seeing what we have. We recently planted the first two of 1,000 trees in the neighborhood. We have Gardeland Proud that's really working on Gardeland Park. There'll be another movie night there. Gardeland Northgate is a wonderful place for people to live, to grow up. And I think this parade just can be a really great opportunity for people to come and visit us. And to show how special we are, if you will notice on Monday, Ground Zero for the Snow was actually at the Bel Air Shopping Center, where there was plenty of cars sliding around. It was truly amazing. So we really are special. And just, you know, we are a neighborhood. I've seen people playing cricket, along with soccer, and of course softball and baseball. That is our passion. So thank you, and I hope you can all make it to this March 10th parade. It's going to be fabulous. Boy Scouts, all the ballplayers. We will have the high school in Natomas and Grant High. We've invited their drum corps. It's going to be so much fun. And followed by a community event afterwards at Rio Tierra. So thank you so much, and I hope you can all make it.
Thank you, Annette. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Ron Elmsley, then Kevin Carter, and then Pastor Gainesboro.
Hello. That Hans coming out party at McClatchy Park. Let's see. Mayor Steinberg was approached by a woman who wanted help with Judy's place. Well, the mayor said, talk to the woman in back. She could help. Okay. That woman said, well, go to Jay's office. Well, Jay has known about this for almost eight years. So anyway, this hot potato thing, it, it's too bad that people can't be honest and say, we can't help you. We're not going to help you. Judy's place for 21 years now has had drug dealing and hooking right out the front door. Now, I guess she's got God on her side, maybe. I guess that counts for quite a bit, because the elected officials just ignore people. So it's too bad. And I hope that maybe someday, somebody might take an interest in it. Maybe the next councilperson. I don't know. But it should be taken care of now, because it's a daily occurrence right out our front door. Drug dealing and sometimes hooking. It used to be hooking was every day. In fact, the last, Terry, the last pee bed person, two women, one woman was pimping another woman and saying, hey, hey, guy, we know what you want.
Your time is up, Mr. Elmsley.
Thank you.
I have six more speakers. The next is Kevin Carter, then Pastor Gainesboro.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Steinberg, first I want to say thank you for allowing me to speak. Traffic is very heavy out there. First, my name is Brother Kevin Carter. I represent the Poor People's Campaign, which is a moral revival. And what it represents is the revival, which represents the refuge, which is the repairs of the breach. And the repairs of the breach, which represents the Reverend William Barber of North Carolina, who represents Moral Mondays, which is a national movement. Just recently, we did a march here in Oak Park, which represents the empowerment of Oak Park. And recently, why we did that march is because there's 250 jobs that we are protesting to have for that community, to re-empower that community because of the disenfranchisement that has taken part in Oak Park. And those jobs that we are hoping that will take place in Oak Park, we encourage the city council members that have not voted for those jobs to take, to take place in Oak Park. We encourage you to revisit that, to make sure that those jobs, you know, take place in Oak Park because of the things that you see today, not just in your own communities, while they're taking place, is because of the votes that you do take that are causing the disenfranchisement in your own communities. It's very important that you do revisit this and make sure that, that these, that you change your votes. It's very important. Time is of the essence now. And if you do not change your votes, a storm is coming.
Time is up, sir. Thank you.
So we ask you and encourage you to revisit these votes. So that's all I have to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Pastor Gainesboro and then Maia Jones.
Pastor, good evening.
Mayor, good evening and counsel. I just wanted to set some things up for item 21. I'm really very grateful to God and grateful to you, Mayor, and to the council for the triage shelter having been opened. And while we still have some challenges, last week, we talked about, we can get the overhead on this. Something else?
We'll get the overhead. I'm sorry, Ominis here. Okay, here we go. Go ahead.
It's hard for all of us men to be in more than one place at one time. You're doing great. Just, we talked about all the major hospitals dumping homeless patients without a place to bring them. And I just wanted to mention a couple positive things that, that the city has accomplished. The county and city have never met before on homelessness. They've met several times. The supervisors and council had never met before. Now they meet every couple months together. $64 million has been raised for the Whole Person Care Act because the mayor knows that once you get somebody off the street, the major part, like raising a child, is the services. Mental illness and drug addiction are connected. But the majority of the homeless are out there because of mental illness, not because of drug addiction. People take drugs and are addicted to alcohol because of the pain in their hearts. $40 million has been raised with the mayor and the county together with the Prop 63 Mental Health Funds for Services. 1,500 housing vouchers have been raised and garnered by the mayor to help people find housing. He has stepped up and said he wants to see built 1,000 tiny homes. Progress is being made.
Thanks, Pastor.
If we're going to be an NBA All-Star Game city, we have got to stop two homeless dying every week.
Yes.
112 last year. I know my time is up.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you so much, sir.
The mayor is doing a good job, and so is the council.
Thank you, Pastor. Sir, you can't chat out, okay? There's, you're going to have to leave.
Next speaker is Maia Jones and then Gary, Gary Gady.
Hi, my name is Maia Jones, and I'm coming to you guys from Oak Park Little League. This morning, we received a notice in the mail stating that our fields were going to be revoked from us after we'd already, we've already went to this Parkson Rec, got all of our stuff in order that we needed to get in order, got our, our contracts for the field, our field use. We got all of our times that we wanted. We paid our field fees. They gave us a note in the mail this morning stating that we have until the 1st of March to amend our contract that they gave to us to take our fields from us for our times that we have. They want to give them to another league that does, is an unchartered league, does not, is not bound to the city, I mean, is not bound to our boundaries of Oak Park. And we have a very large problem with this, because it's not only affecting the 200 kids in our league, but it'll also affect the kids in all of District 7, which is all of our, yeah, Oak Park Little League District 7. It'll affect all the kids through all of, all of South Sacramento, because we already have our, all of our schedules in order. And so we just need to bring light this issue.
Thank you for bringing it forward. I know Mr. Conlon, our Assistant City Manager here, can talk to you afterwards unless you want to come up, Chris, and briefly, we're trying to get to the main agenda here tonight. So I'm going to ask you to be very brief, and then we'll take it offline, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here's a copy of the letter. Direct everybody's attention to the fact that it says you have received all requested dates. This is a time revision only. It outlines the specific dates that they get. City must split the use of the field in a fair and equitable manner. That has been the policy on all our fields. Whenever we issue out fields, we divide it amongst the various entities that use it. There are two little league groups that use it. They have traditionally used it. Every year they do. Last year, when Oak Park Little League actually came in late and didn't submit their application until three months after the closeout date, we welcomed them in. And we split the field up between those seven two little league entities. This year, we did the same thing. You can see the dates are noticed there. You see, the only thing we did was we changed the time that they were playing to the afternoon, and we gave the other entity that's playing out there the morning dates. The entire contract is here. I would show you that on that contract.
Okay, let's take, let's take, let's take the rest of it offline. Thank you so much. I think that.
Thank you, ma'am.
And happy to meet with you. And if there's another way to divide the, divide the time for the field, I'm sure you'd be open to it. But thank you.
Next speaker is Gary Gady and then Lori Mamola.
Hi, my name is Gary Gady. I'm also from Oak Park Little League. I am the president. I did meet with Chris Collin last year regarding the park fees. Last year, Oak Park, every Saturday, we had to park from 2:00 in the afternoon to 6:00 p.m. The other league, who happens to be run by a city employee, and his wife also happens to work for Park and Rec, and it works in the permit office, they're allowed the mornings. Keep in mind, it's a travel league, 14 kids compared to 170 kids. We have a softball program, three kids. We have a major league program, four teams. Minor league, two teams. Rookie league, T-ball. So when you say all of a sudden that it's fair that we have from 2:00 to 5:00 o'clock with approximately 19 teams compared to two travel teams, it's not equitable. Last year, a contract was a contract. When we had, we know they said we came late. This year, we turned everything in on time. And on November 8, we received a contract. It was going, we made the schedules with the other leagues, Airport Parkway, Land Park Pacific, and Tahoe-Talat, they're all playing. So when we have this contract, on April 28, we have two games from Tahoe coming near to the park. We have one team coming from Airport on that day, and we're being pushed out. We find this, we just find this inequitable. We keep going through this every year and stuff. You know, we sit, there's a conflict of interest here. When you have park employees that are working there for the Park and Rec, and they're also monopolizing the park. It's not fair. We're 14 kids versus 180.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Chenier? There are more people. Let's hear from everybody, the rest of the folks on the subject, then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Chenier.
Oh, there's plenty of them.
Well, I understand. We only have a few more signed up.
I have one more speaker on this item than someone else on a different item. Lori Mamola? Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to get to come to you and speak. I, too, am here in support of Oak Park Little League. And I need to bring to your attention that there are not two little league entities competing for the same field. We have Little League, that is a chartered member of Little League International, has been for 53 years. And then there's another league that is made up of city employees and then a group of children that it's drawing away from Little League. It would be lovely if both leagues could unite under the official charter, a sanctioned Little League team. But it's not. And we're being asked to play fairly with this other team that's made up, that's not under any umbrella or have any oversight, that's competing with Oak Park Little League. And it's, it's not fair. It's not equitable. And we, Oak Park Little League needs our Oak Park fields. And so we ask that you would look at this issue again. Last year, when we were playing, the city allowed a rugby team to come in and compete with our T-ballers for the same field. And it wasn't safe. It wasn't fair. We have these big, strong rugby players playing on the same grass in the same area as four and five-year-olds. Oak Park Little League needs McClatchy Park as our field, the neighborhood field to play in. And we should not be competing with this made up team run by city employees.
Thank you for coming. I want to turn it over to Council Member Chenier for a moment, please.
Thank you.
So, I appreciate the challenge here. And the challenge, as many of you know, has been going on, certainly since at least I've been in office. And we've had many meetings over the last seven years to see about how the field could be shared. My bottom line is, how do we do what we need to do for all of the young people that are playing baseball? I think that's the most important thing. When we figured out that there was a problem again this year, I did reach out to Oak Park Little League, asked them to come in and sit down and have a discussion with both teams, so we can figure out how best to do this. Unfortunately, they were unwilling to do that. I'm still willing to convene that meeting, bring the city managers' folks in. We can sit down and talk about the best way to do this, so that young people in Oak Park and young people who are participating in both these leagues can be successful. That's the bottom line for me.
I would take advantage of the offer.
I'm happy to do that. And we can do that late this week or early next week and see if we can work out something that is amenable to everyone.
Okay. Please call Councilmember Chenier's office. You have an invitation to come on in, sit down with the staff, and try to work this out. Excuse me. No, you can't, no, no, no. Call tomorrow, come on in this week, and get to work. We want to do the very best we can by Oak Park's kids, Sacramento's kids. But it takes a sit down. Okay, last speaker.
Last speaker for items not on the agenda is Carlos Orozco. Carlos?
Yes, sir, and the rest of the people in the audience. First time homeless in 11 years, okay? Came out of Oak Park, 20th Avenue. I'm okay. Needles all over the place. I'm the only one cleaned up there. Nobody else cared. Go down to the next street, it was 38th and 20th. Big old dumpster area. That hasn't changed. Any folks in the area, when you take off, you drive in Oak Park area, please go to 20th. Still saying, okay? Feel what these people are saying. Believe me. Been a long resident here. Ain't nothing changed. Little help. And again, a lot more needs to be done. I thought the last mayor was going to do something. That's his hood right there. KJ's hood. Right, sir? I think this guy right here could get stuff done. He just very started. And guess what, sir? I know you will.
Thank you.
He's going to do 10 times better than that guy. He was just about, he's Sacramento Kings and which was good. We need better than that.
We're all different. It's okay.
Anyway, here's the bottom line. In order to get things done, we need you people to make a little more nudge. First time in Capitol, first time I was there, when I was a runaway, 12 years old, when they had the coin thing there. My first time in the Capitol, I got lucky. I got close to the governor's office. How that happened? I think my personality, my real talk, go for it. Hey, well, I'll be around. And again, homeless, first time in 11 years, two months now. I picked myself up, dusted myself off.
Okay. Time is up. But thank you for coming to testify today.
But I will be around. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Please, put that little nudge in there, huh?
Okay. That concludes the public testimony on items not on the agenda. We now move to the consent calendar this evening. Any announcements on the consent calendar?
I do have something to read into the record on item number five. I do have three speakers on this item.
Okay.
Councilmember Chenier will be recusing himself from item number five. And I would like to read into the record that the resolution is amended to add Section 4, which reads as follows. City staff is directed to work with the Sierra Health Foundation, the center, and the Oak Park Neighborhood Association, and the South Oak Park Community Association to return to council within 90 days with an amended agreement refining the composition of the Trust Advisory Committee to ensure appropriate community representation. So with that, would you like to take the speakers on items number five?
Yes, please, on item five.
Alexandria White, Macworthy, and then Joni. Alexandria White, Mac Worthy, and then Joni Titherington. Titherington. Is Alexandria White here? Thank you.
Meeting City Councilmember and Mayor, City Councilmembers and Mayor Steinberg, and audience as well. So we are in favor of this proposal, and I'd like to say that as the first suburb of Sacramento, Oak Park is truly the heart of the city. Oak Park's rich history and diverse population are what makes the neighborhood so special. We need to preserve it at all costs. This collaborative effort will hopefully infuse a much-needed inspiration for our underserved area. The South Oak Park Community Association remains dedicated to bring empowerment to the local residents as we enter this exciting journey with our new community partners and become a model for the city and the nation. And I'd just like to add that I think that we could help also address some of the issues that have been brought up today with homelessness and lack of financial training and all that. So I think that this program that we're asking that you guys vote on in favor of can really help address some of these issues that we're dealing with in this council today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Very exciting.
Speaker is Mac Worthy, then Joni Titherington.
If you talk to a man that know business, this number five, you got access to number five, bring it up on screen. That will solve all your problems right there.
Number what, five?
Number five. If you take charge of that type of money being raised on the name of Oak Park, that's pimping. Ain't nothing on there that could cut this part. Oak Park can get money, Cudges Park can get money. And this is not this man's problem here. This is Jay's problem, been going over years. That much should have been earmarked instead of shipping that money to another area. Last year, you were shipping it from the recreation to the Polish apartment. What you doing? You ain't saying nothing about Cudges Park. Then here, we look at here, and see our foundation. What does the Cudges Foundation come in? Put money in your pocket here that say we want to decrease the mortality of black babies. That's pimping. That's pimping black folks. These young people can't even cut through that. Nobody up there can cut through that because they are non-profit. When you go to free enterprise, you will see what this thing is doing to the neighborhood. If this money was earmarked, you wouldn't have this problem about the Little League. I was out there with Blackwell then. When my grandson had T-ball, he wasn't ready, and I pulled away from him. I was there with Cabbie. No, pull away from me, because they are being pimped. The toilets was out there, a disgrace, and they done nothing about it, and that's because of this type of thing is being done with the money.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Ermarched the money, and it won't be transferred.
Okay.
The last speaker on this item is Joni Titherington.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers.
Billy, how are you?
I'm doing lovely this evening. What beautiful weather we're having after yesterday's, whatever we want to call it.
No storm.
I just want to say that the Oak Park Neighborhood Association absolutely appreciates the partnership between the city, Sierra Health Foundation, and others that are involved in the process, and really in being inclusive with the Oak Park neighborhood and the neighborhood associations to ensure that we go deep within our community and we resolve some of the issues, and we absolutely support council's resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the trust and funding agreement with Sierra Health Foundation. With this amendment, OPNA and SOCA are looking forward to working with the partnerships with Sierra Health Foundation and the Center to ensure that residents have a voice in Oak Park. And with that, I will end. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much for coming. All right. It's a fabulous project and a fabulous collaboration. You know, Councilmember Shanier's recusing himself. Congratulations on great work. I mean, this is the kind of economic development that we want to see in our neighborhoods. So, we have the consent calendar. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, we got Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to move the consent calendar, but I know the clerk did read in to the record the request from the Oak Park Neighborhood Association, South Oak Park, so I wanted to acknowledge that and make sure that you knew that that had happened, and I'll make that motion.
Good, that's moved, and that's seconded by Councilmember J. Let's take item five separately so that Councilmember Shanier can vote on the rest of the consent calendar.
We can vote together if he's recused himself on consent.
Oh, is that the way it works? Okay, so it's all together, but he's not voting on five. Okay. All in favor of the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain. Very good. Consent calendar passes unanimously. Again, with item five, with Councilmember Shanier abstaining. Let's now move to items 17 and 18. I want to take these two items together for purposes of public testimony. I know there needs to be one, or separate motions for each of them, but that's fine. Mr. Simpson, welcome.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm Carl Simpson, your Code and Housing Enforcement Chief. The items before you are the Neighborhood Code Compliance and Housing Dangerous Buildings Fees and Penalties for Special Assessment Leans and/or Personal Obligations. Item number 17. The Committee Development Department Administrative Penalties and Neighborhood Code Compliance Case Fee Staff Report lists an amended total of 141 properties with a sum of $293,431.48 of unpaid fees and penalties scheduled for leans and/or personal obligations against the property. 14 properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have been removed from the report and are identified as line numbers 27, 55, 75 through 76, 88 through 89, 103 through 105, 134 through 141, and 198 to 199. Item number 18. The Housing in Dangerous Buildings Case Fee Staff Report lists an amended total of 57 properties with a total of $81,243.78 of unpaid fees scheduled for leans against the property. Five properties listed in Exhibit A for the staff report have been removed from the report and are identified as line numbers 25, 44, 45, 58, 68, 78 through 79. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the two resolutions separately as amended to allow the city to collect the unpaid fees by placing special assessment levies and/or personal obligations upon the properties.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. We're going to take public comment. For the record, though, let's open the public hearing on item 17 and 18. Mr. Worthy, it's your turn. Because we're taking this as one item, you get two minutes. Mr. Worthy, you signed up for both, but because we're taking them as one item, you get one opportunity to speak for two minutes.
To think about it, you done seen this adding enough on this agenda to do something about it. When you talk about city investment money, if those properties in bad shape, you can get a contractor to come in and fix that property up, and the city take a lien against that property with solid interest rates as a second mortgage on that property. And say this man time and timing here. Same thing to the fees that's old. People, it's got to be big-time fees before they take their property. Go to other states and look at other states. There's people invest in those liens, and they pay the city the 9%. But here, the city want to own it all. How many pieces of property that was rundown property that you bought off the banks? How many of those people is in dangerous property now that you bought off the banks with the taxpayers' dollars? That's what you should talk to these people about. But you abused that money. You didn't put it into a trust that you could use it when people don't have the income to fix up that property, to go and fix that property up and put a lien which is classified as a second mortgage. Whenever who sell got to pay off the interest and everything else on that second mortgage. If you do business here, instead of pimping folks, you may get something done on these type of issues, but you prefer to pimp people and waste the folks' time on this type of issue, and you can get this done with making a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Mr. Gara.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor. One, I wanted to thank Carl and your team for all the good work you're doing out there on code enforcement. We do have some property owners who aren't taking care of their property and making it difficult for their neighbors. And with that, I'd like to move to close the public hearing and move the item.
We have to take two separate votes, Mr. Gara, so let's do item 17 first.
Go ahead, 17 first.
We have a motion from Mr. Gara to close the public hearing, a second from Mr. Carr. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, the motion carries. Now, Mr. Gara on number 18.
On number 18, I'd like to move to close the public hearing and move the item.
All right, we have a motion, second from Councilmember Jennings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. On item number 19, it's going to be continued, but we need a motion to continue it to March 20th. Councilmember Ashby.
Yep, happy to move the item, and I think March 20th is fine. There isn't a real issue with this, just needed a little more time on one of the minor pieces, so happy to move it.
Motion to continue the item to March 20th with a second from Councilmember Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Thank you. We're on to item number 20.
Item 20 is a personnel resolution covering unrepresented officers and employees.
Do we have a presentation, or we? Oh, that's okay. Welcome, Ms. Banks. We're moving quick here, huh?
You were very quick. Okay. We are just asking for council to pass the resolution approving the reso covering unrepresented employees, approving the salary schedule, the employer-employer relations policy, and approving salary increases and ranges for the city auditor and public safety director of public safety and accountability.
Thank you very much. Councilmember, we have no public speakers signed up.
Vice Mayor, I'm happy to move the item and thank HR and their team for all this great work. It's a short, quick item, but with a whole lot of time and effort behind it, so good work for city staff.
We have a motion from Councilmember Ashby, a second from Mr. Carr. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
On to item number 21.
Item 21 is the winter triage shelter mid-season report.
Thank you very much. I know this is a long-awaited report. I want to hear the full staff presentation, and I want to sort of frame the discussion, if you will, after we hear the news here tonight, and then we'll have a council and public discussion. Mr. Conlon, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, City of Sacramento. Tonight, we're providing a mid-season report on the winter triage shelter. On October 24th, 2017, council approved the funding agreement with Volunteers of America to operate this new and innovative model designed to accommodate individuals with complex needs, long histories of homelessness, and higher barriers to accessing traditional shelter system. The unique needs of this underserved population led to five operating principles for the winter triage shelter. One, lowering barriers for program entry. Two, expanding hours of operations to allow guests to remain onsite, both daytime and nighttime. Three, incorporating accommodations for guests with pets. Four, allowing for partners and adult family configurations. And five, allowing for storage of large amounts of personal belongings. Since opening its doors on December 8th, 2017, the winter triage shelter has enrolled 264 unduplicated guests, primarily from encampments within a mile of the shelter site. These guests represent a highly vulnerable population with an array of service needs. 89% of the shelter guests report living with disabling conditions, half are over the age of 50. Two-thirds have experienced at least one year or more of continuous homelessness. Nearly half of all guests served report having no income at the time of enrollment, and even more live under the poverty line. For many, the Winter Triage Center is the first homeless program they have connected with. As with any innovative undertaking, this endeavor has been far from perfect in execution, but it has been significant in its impact, and we have created an invaluable body of knowledge about how to make a triage center effective. It's important to note that this is not our only community response to unsheltered homelessness. During this year's winter months, there were approximately 920 shelter beds available for singles and nearly 106 units for families throughout our city. Bottom line, as a result of our winter triage shelter, a significant percentage of our most vulnerable population has benefited from care, shelter, and services, with several in or on the road to long-term solutions. I'd now like to introduce our lead for winter triage, Andrew Gerken, who will study, who will discuss the specifics about our operations.
Thank you, Mr. Conlon, Mr. Gerken. Welcome. I want to recognize that person sitting at the table, too, Ms. Halcon, Emily Halcon.
Sure, too.
I made one or two presentations here before the council, and it's great. You got a, you're building a team here, which is terrific. Okay, go ahead.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Andrew Gerken. I'm a program analyst in the city manager's office, and I have the pleasure to work alongside and under the direction of Emily Halcon, who you referenced earlier. Presented tonight is the update on the winter triage shelter program, and this report is based on information and data collected from December 8th, 2017, to February 16th, 2018. This report provides an initial overview of the activities and outcomes associated with this triage shelter, and will provide a look into the demographic information on our shelter guests and the mitigation efforts the city committed to the surrounding community. The winter triage shelter is funded by the city and is operated in partnership with Volunteers of America. The impacts of unsheltered homelessness in the community and the unique needs of this underserved population helped inform the guiding principles and approach the city and VOA intentionally incorporated in the operations of this program, which were referenced earlier by our assistant city manager. I'll do a quick overview of the guiding principles and note that this program was designed to instill housing-first practices to lessen the requirements to program engagement, expand the operations, hours of operations to include both daytime and nighttime, incorporate accommodations for pets and adults, partners, and adult families configurations, to help keep people intact with their systems of support and allow for storage of a large amount of personal belongings. These principles were intended to better meet people where they're at. The approach was to emphasize outreach and engagement. All referrals came through two channels. The city's Pathways Partner Sacramento covered-
Which is whole-person care.
Whole-person care. Their community health workers, and the city's Impact Team officers. This approach was to help facilitate the connections from unsheltered to program enrollment and allow the transportation of guests, their belongings, and pets, and to ensure that once an area was cleared, the remaining debris could be removed. The enrollments through referrals also helped to lessen the impact of shelter operations to the surrounding community. I'd like to acknowledge our partners that were involved in this. The city did not do it alone, and some of them are actually in the audience this evening. Volunteers of America is our program operator, and they provide the onsite case management and 24/7 staffing. Pathways to Health and Home provides the outreach and the ongoing case management and the support as individuals transition out of homelessness. Front Street Animal Shelter, which provided all of the animal care services, the donated food and supplies for our shelter guests with pets. And Redtail Technology and Uptown WiFi, they both provided a donation of computers, technical equipment, and WiFi to shelter guests to help them better connect to resources and services. From December 8th, 2017, to February 16th, 2018, as mentioned earlier, the shelter saw 264 unduplicated guests. There were a total of 277 enrollments, however, some of those were duplicate enrollments. By focusing on outreach-driven access and lowering barriers to entry, the winter triage shelter is serving a population unlike that of more traditional shelters. Displayed on this slide are only some of the information we know about our program guests. It's important to note that this demographic information is self-reported upon enrollment into the program, and all this data is collected in the community's homeless management and information system. The ages of guests enrolled ranged from 18 to 90, with the average age being 49 years old, and over half of the guests, as mentioned earlier, are over the age of 50, and 33% are over the age of 60. This shows a significant number of guests who are advanced in age. Nearly 83% of guests were enrolled from the surrounding community, that means that they Nearly 83% of guests were enrolled from the surrounding community, that means that they referred, from 1.5 miles around the shelter site, and half of guests reported having no income, and more living on an annual income well below the poverty line. Forty-three percent of guests identified as female, 57% identified as male. And the two largest racial groups served were white at 62% and black or African-American at 23%. It's important to note that this data aligns with the recent Unsheltered Point in Time Count Census, which was collected in January of 2017. Seth also looked at the level of vulnerability of guests served, and we looked at disabling status, disability status, and length of time homeless. Eighty-nine percent, that's roughly almost nine out of 10, self-reported as living with a disabling condition, which could have included the 56% of guests who reported having a physical disability, 54% who reported having a chronic health condition, and another 56% who reported having a history of mental health illness. The average length of time guests reported experiencing homelessness was four years, with 174 guests having a continual homelessness of at least one year. This represents nearly two-thirds of our guests. To break this down further, 118 individuals were homeless for one to five years, 31 were homeless for six to 10 years, and 24 were homeless for at least a decade or more, with the longest reported homeless history of 40 years. Part of the funding for the winter triage shelter, council did approve one-time funding for allocation to support mitigation efforts in the North Sacramento area. This was separate from VOA's onsite staff presence and Good Neighbor policies, which included monitoring inside the shelter and in the immediate area around the shelter site. It's important to note that VOA staff acted as the early intervention when situations escalated to quickly de-escalate any potential issue and elicit the proper elevated response when necessary. In addition from VOA support, the city allocated funds to Downtown Streets Team, who is here this evening, to establish work crews of formerly homeless individuals to collect debris and provide beautification in the neighborhoods surrounding the community, increase police presence in the form of impact officers and bicycle patrols in the North Sacramento community, sheriff work crews, and city public works to help pick up the debris that was removed by the efforts. Just want to highlight that the joint efforts of the Downtown Streets teams and city crews led to the removal of 406 cubic yards of trash and debris, which equivalates into 2.3 football fields' worth of debris removed.
Just a quick question on the Downtown Streets team, which I think is fabulous, and we've met with them. How many folks are participating? I don't know if I missed that, I'm sorry.
The last number that I had was 27 team members.
Twenty-seven team members, working basically full-time?
They work four days a week.
Four days a week?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Perfect.
And I'll touch base on the statistic on crime and ask that Sergeant Galliano or Captain Seifert can speak more in depth of that, but 48% reduction in overall crime as measured in an area of .65 miles around the shelter site. I'd like to mention that the Downtown Streets teams worked in collaboration with the community to identify specific areas to do the beautification work, which included Dixiean Avenue, El Camino Triangle, Del Paso Boulevard, North Gate Boulevard, Railroad Drive, and Woodlake Park. So far, we have served 264, I should say, February 16th, we served 264 unduplicated guests. 137 of them have no record in HMIS of enrollment in a homeless service providing program. 137, that's 52% of guests. For these guests, this is the first time engaging in a shelter or a similar homeless program. And of the 264 guests, 118 were enrolled in the city's Pathways to Health and Home program and will receive and are receiving ongoing case management, health coordination, and housing support. And all guests, even those not currently enrolled in the Pathways program, are offered case management via VOA staff and have access to case management to plan around their specific needs to address resolving their homelessness. To date, we've had 100 exits from the program, and 37 of them, represented by the multicolored houses on this chart, have exited to a non-homeless situation. So, 12 guests have exited to permanent housing, that's either through a subsidy or reunification with family members. Eight guests have connected to a temporary or transitional living situation, and 14 guests have exited to another homeless service program, most notably another shelter program. This report covers only the first 71 days, and we continue to do the work. What we've learned so far shows that our focused efforts on outreach and lowering barriers has seen a different population and a more vulnerable population than those that we've seen in our other programs. While safe and affordable, permanent housing is always the goal, this is a very vulnerable demographic, and I want to highlight that. And the winter shelter has offered some of the initial steps to supporting our guests transition out of homelessness. And this concludes my part of the presentation.
Thank you very much for the excellent presentation. Councilmember Carr has a question.
Quick question on the 52%. Does that mean they have not been contacted by a navigator before this?
If that navigator program was entering into HMIS, yes, and most of the programs were.
Okay. Thank you so much. I know we want to hear from our law enforcement leaders as well. Captain and the sergeant here, you're out there every day, and yeah, there's a lot of question, right? Is this improved or not improved, the homeless problem in North Sacramento specifically? What about, you know, the riverbank and the camping? Certainly, the 48% number is very impressive. I'd like you to explain that, if you would, and also give your overall view from your years working in North Sacramento about what this has meant, positive, negative, or anything in between.
First of all, good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and Council. It's good to be here discussing this topic with you. I want to talk about-
Say your name for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Pam Seifert. I'm the area captain for the North Station.
Thank you, Captain Seifert.
I want to talk a little bit at first about the police department's response to the winter shelter. At the beginning, myself and Greg and others were asked to come up with a PD plan for overall safety of the shelter and the surrounding neighborhoods. We were provided with funds to do this on overtime, and so I want to go over a portion, the kind of a three-pronged plan that we had put together based on our discussion. So, first of all was increasing our impact team. So, what we did is we created an impact team just for the north area of Sacramento. We already had a team that was operating throughout the whole city, so we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. We knew that that was, that model was effective, and we wanted whatever we were doing out at the North Station to model exactly what they were doing, so we weren't doing two different things. So, what we did is we put together a team of one sergeant and three officers. Those teams were operating on Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays. They are still operating. Those are seven-hour shifts, and it's primarily during day shift hours, which is when it's easiest to contact the services that we need and to do the debris collection that they were also tasked to do. So, that team was trained by the existing impact team and service providers. Again, I wanted to make sure they had the same training, that were following the same model. The mission was the same as impact, handling 311 calls, handling police department homeless-related calls, monitoring and working with the shelter, and coordinating the trash pickups, other duties, but those are the main ones that we wanted them to concentrate on. The second prong of our approach was the bike and foot patrols along the Del Paso Boulevard and Woodlake Park neighborhoods. Prior to the shelter opening, this had always been a big ask. I would go to meetings in North Sac, especially with the P-Bed and Woodlake neighborhoods, and they really, really wanted some foot beats, especially bike officers along the Boulevard to help the businesses along the Boulevard. So, that was kind of an easy way for us to transition into this. Their mission was a little bit different than impact. They were still trained with impact, so they knew the concepts and how to refer and how to get help to the homeless. But we had them, my ask for them was really to, they worked in pairs of two, they worked six-hour shifts, went out on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. I tried to get as much coverage throughout the week, so really, we had Sundays open, but we had six-day-a-week coverage just with the north area plan. What I asked for them is high visibility, creating contacts with the businesses along the Boulevard, doing referrals to impact, conducting enforcement, and then doing park checks, not just at Woodlake, but the other smaller parks that surrounded the residential area. And then the final prong was increasing the patrol priorities in the area, so our regular patrol officers who were out there patrolling, if this was their beat, I communicated to the, at the watch level, to the sergeants and the officers that worked those beats that I expected them to prioritize high visibility around the shelter, along Del Paso Boulevard, and to, you know, just really pay more attention to the surrounding neighborhoods. So, that was the plan to start with. We did pull statistics. We ended up with a .65-mile buffer to pull these statistics from. We compared December 1st of 2016 to January 31st of 17 to December 1st of 17 to January 31st of 18. So, one thing I want to say about the statistics to begin with is that's a very short period of time to grab statistics and have them be super, super meaningful. Two months of stats is, they are what they are, but I think I'll show in some of the stats that that becomes problematic. A lot of people in the community wanted stats after a month, and I feel good that we at least got two months' worth of stats, but I, you know, I think if we have a longer period, if we wait until March 31st or the end of the shelter, that we should take a look at the stats for the entire length of time. So, this is the area that was included in the statistical data. All these crime stats were pulled by our crime analysis unit. So, this is one crime analyst pulling the stats. So, basically, what we showed on the stats is that almost all of the statistics showed that crime was down. We had a few areas where it was up. Aggravated assaults, we went from zero to two. I took a look at both of those assault reports, and it doesn't look like either one of them were related to the winter shelter or transient-related issues. We had, went from two to three business burglaries. I also took a look at those crime reports. I think you could probably look at one of them in which someone broke into the Baskin Robbins and stole a ice cream cake. You know, I think that's, you might be able to say that that might be homeless-related, someone who's hungry and breaking into business.
(laughing).
We'll talk later. And then narcotic offenses went up from six to seven, and I did not pull those up. But I highlighted the vehicle burglaries there, because we went from 21 to six, and that kind of caught my eye. And something I recall, last year, when I first took over command, in December of last year, we had an auto burglary series along the Boulevard and in the Woodlake area, and that's why that number is so high. So, what I'm saying is, if we lengthen out the amount of time that we're looking at these statistics, we can get some of those anomalies out of the stats. So, it looks one, I mean, 48% is great, we look brilliant, but I think the longer you take a look at those stats, it's still good. Our presence out there, I believe, had an effect on reducing crime.
Well, that's the question. You've increased police presence-
Correct.
-out there as a result of the mitigation dollars associated with opening the triage shelter. So, in your professional opinion, Captain, you and the sergeant, has that increased police presence led to an improvement in some of the public safety indicators in the area in and around the triage shelter?
Yes, I believe it has.
Okay.
I think you throw that, that amount of resources into one area, high visibility alone, continued high visibility in any area is going to reduce crime in that area.
That works.
Good.
My last slide here, and I think Greg can iron out this slide a little bit better than I can, but this is something else we looked at, which was calls for service. So, citizen-initiated calls, calls that came in, and officer-initiated calls that came in. This is something that we expected. They went up significantly in both areas, so we had more citizens calling in about transient-related crimes, and we had more officers initiating contact regarding transient-related crimes. And that's not really surprising. Our efforts were concentrated there for officer-initiated. We were encouraging citizens to call in, to contact 311, and the majority of those calls are probably 311 calls that were referrals to the impact team.
And what about observation and appearance, right? There are some folks I know from the Neighborhood Association, I think it's a minority, actually, who say, you know, very strongly that the number of people who are homeless have increased on the river, Woodlake Park, you know, you hear all this. Okay, so, here you've got over 200 people into a triage shelter. The majority of them are from the vicinity, as the statistics showed a moment ago. So, what are you observing overall out in the community?
So, the community response I get has been mixed. I get many people who contact me or email me or call me and express concern that they feel that there are more homeless, especially along the Boulevard and in the Woodlake Park area. I monitor it myself by driving around the area and taking a look at it. I speak with my sergeants and my officers that actually work the area. They believe that there's been a decrease, and they're happy with the changes along the Boulevard. But having said that, you know, part of my job, too, is to, you know, perception of safety is also part of my job. So, I think that's someplace where we have room for improvement.
Sergeant, do you want to add anything on that score? Thank you, Captain.
Greg Galliano, your impact sergeant with the Sacramento Police Department. So, as Captain Seifert had noted, as well as Andrew in his report back, this did increase the impact team's presence and efforts in the area around the shelter, and as you all are well aware, our efforts seek to be holistic as we respond to homelessness, respecting and responding to the residents, the businesses, with an ethical engagement with our homeless population. In this, in this area, and with these added fundings and these efforts, the officers first and foremost sought to do added outreach, which allowed us to meet with people who are homeless who hadn't been met with before, and get them enrolled and engaged with outreach partners who they hadn't been enrolled with and engaged before, seeking to get them into the city's whole-person care and Pathways to Health and Home program, as well as working with other outreach partners. The other key point there is that we were able and had a place to connect individuals who had traditionally not been able to get into other shelters because of barriers. So, in my personal view and of the location, is that there's been a substantial reduction in the encampments, mostly because a large number of individuals who are homeless hadn't been engaged with before and weren't able to go into a traditional shelter system and are now in the shelter. On top of that, we did have added mitigation efforts, which allowed us to remove trash and debris from encampments that before would have taken a substantial amount of time to work with various entities to find crews to do those cleanups with if we could get them done at all.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Right. Does that complete the presentation?
Yes.
Very thorough presentation. Thank you to everybody on the team. I know there's a lot of public testimony. I want to make a comment, if I may, take the chair's prerogative, because I do think it is important that we put all this into some context. First of all, I want to thank the city staff that have worked on this, and I want to thank the Volunteers of America and all those who have been associated with this. I frankly think your work has been nothing less than heroic. That's what I think, just one person's opinion. Because what you have done from just a human level is- Because what you have done from just a human level is you've allowed over 200 people who had been home, most of whom had been homeless for long periods of time, in and around the surrounding neighborhoods, to finally have some hope that begins with shelter. But the context that I want to put this into is to talk to the community a little bit, I know we're going to talk Thursday night about this, but this is the entire Sacramento community, about what our big-picture plan here is. Because, you know, some of the concern, and some of the critics say, "Well, you stuck this off a railroad avenue. What's going to happen?" We want to answer all those questions, but what I want to assure people is that this is part of a comprehensive strategy and plan. And yes, we have decided as a city that, though we have many good partners who help us with this, that if we aren't aggressive on our own and gather the capacity and resources to make this problem better in Sacramento on its own, it is inevitably going to grow worse, and be worse not only in the North Sacramento neighborhood, but every neighborhood in Sacramento. So how does this triage center fit in? There are six elements of success, and we're focused on all of them. There is assertive outreach to the community through the impact teams, through clinically-trained social workers, through street outreach teams. And there's case management of those people, which is the only way you can envelop them with the help they need before they're stable. That's whole-person care. That's the $64 million. And by the way, the whole-person care is really, in a way, up and running, it is, and the impact teams have increased. We don't formally begin whole-person care until April the 1st. So we've only just begun, as the song goes, to engage in the assertive outreach that will result in more people being agreeable to services and us being able to get them the help they need. That's whole-person care. You know about our discussions and resolution with the county last year, culminating on November the 7th. The county has agreed to cooperate with us, to partner with us, $44 million of mental health services, because that's the other essential element here, combined with substance abuse. You can get people in the triage shelter, but if you don't provide them the services, they're not going to, in many cases, be able to succeed. That's three elements: assertive outreach, case management, and mental health, substance abuse services. And then we have four and five. Five, let's go to for a minute, is permanent housing, permanent supportive housing. We know we have a shortage of permanent supportive housing. Last week, we put out a so-called Request for Information. We're putting $200 million of project-based vouchers on the table, and asked the development community, and the manufactured home community, and all those who are innovative and want to help us create 1,000 efficiency homes in Sacramento to begin making that dent. And of course, housing is more complicated, and we're going to talk and act more on that issue in the year ahead. But even with permanent housing, and mental health services, and assertive outreach, and case management, none of it works unless you have triage housing, unless you have what we've created off Railroad Avenue. Because people who are ill or addicted to drugs are not going to go from the streets into permanent housing overnight. It doesn't work that way. It'd be nice if it did. It is 90 days, 120 days, 150 days, hopefully 90 days, for the professionals, the VOAs, the TLCSs, the turning points, to assess people, to see what they need, and then to wrap ourselves around them and move them to permanent housing when we have it, with the services that they need. And so are we backing up this five-pronged plan with actual resources? You bet we are. Whole-person care, mental health services, $200 million for permanent housing, and yes, we're spending some city general fund money, a significant amount of money, on this triage shelter. We can't do it all, but one of the questions that's raised tonight by the community that we're going to talk about Thursday night out in North Sacramento is, what do we do about this triage facility? Let me say a couple things. Number one, I've committed to raising $20 million, and I could use all of your help, by the way. So we can triple our triage capacity throughout the city. Because if we can get 600 people into this imperfect triage, and it turns over every 90 days, that's 2,400 people a year. If we can match that with permanent housing and the services, combined with the outreach, we could actually reduce this population on the streets over the course of two to three years, and that's what we intend to do. And by the way, every public opinion poll, and everybody you talked to says that this is the most serious public safety and quality-of-life issue that we face in our community. And so those who say, "Are you only doing North Sacramento?", our intent is to do more. We need to raise the money, and we need to find the locations that are large enough to be able to accommodate the population. And so we start where we start. There's a sixth element to all of this, by the way, which maybe is every bit as important, and that is, part of the $20 million we intend to raise will go towards rental assistance for people who are living on that proverbial ledge, who are one, one workplace injury, one auto accident, one family illness, one lost job, one too-high-rent increase away from losing their housing. If we can give them $1,000 properly-vetted and keep them housed for two years, we won't then increase the ranks of people on the streets. I don't guarantee you success, and I certainly am not promising a cure here. But you better believe the people of this city want us to do everything we can to try to make this problem demonstrably better, and that's what we're doing. And so I will work with the neighborhood. But I'll tell you one thing we will not do, and by the way, when we talk to the neighborhood, and we'll have this conversation on Thursday night, again, I know, what I said, and I want to reiterate this again, is that we would never open two shelters, triage shelters, in North Sacramento. That would be unfair. And what we talked about in the very first meeting was the potential of opening Evergreen, the lumberjack site, and transitioning from railroad to Evergreen. Well, it's government, and it's another agency, and they're cooperating and all that, but there is no way that that Evergreen site is going to be ready, even if it's the right site, in the very near future. So what do we then do? We want to talk to the community about this, but I'm going to tell you my bottom line. I said in the paper, I'll say it again. I don't think anybody on this city council is going to turn out 200-plus people back onto the streets. And if you think that's what we're going to do, we're not doing it. And we'll find the resources, and we'll find, and we have the political to do it. So work with us, please. Nobody's trying to foist anything on anybody. We're trying to solve a major community problem here, that by the way, as the evidence shows, thanks to the good work of our law enforcement officers and our homeless team, has been affecting North Sacramento in a very dramatic way. And it's now at least a little bit better, by observation and by crime statistics. I wanted to say all that, because this isn't just about a triage shelter. It's about much more. We may, we're not going to cure this. Over three years, we have a chance, if we stick with it, if we stick with what we know works, to make it much better. Let's hear from the public, please. What do I do? Okay. Clearing, clearing everybody. You can, okay, I'm sorry.
I have 10 speakers on this item. The first is Mike Jasky, Noel Cameraman, and Howard Lawrence.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, Councilmember, City Manager Chan. For the record, my name's Mike Jasky, speaking for Sacramento area congregations together at local organizing committee on homelessness, and a member of District 6. Let me remind you how we got here. On September 12th, your staff provided a whole series of options about dealing with homelessness. You essentially told them to come back with specific projects that would follow that whole suite of activities. You suffered an uproar in the community because of the publication of the location of Railroad Drive Triage Shelter, but you persevered, and on October 24th, you established a contract with VOA, et cetera, as has been described. And as Mr. Conlon said, it opened in early December and ramped up capacity over a few weeks. So what's unfortunate, as the mayor has said, that we have housed something like 250 people, but we haven't got hardly any of them into permanent housing. And that's obviously the goal. You just reiterated, sir, what I saw you quoted in the newspaper as saying, that you would never, you would have a principle of never, in effect, throwing these people out onto the street, and we wholeheartedly endorse that. There's a current LA Times editorial board series that's being published. Today's topic is, "Don't Let NIMBYs or Weak Need Politicians Stand in the Way of Homeless Housing." Now, their context is more the development of new projects, but it applies equally well here. It's the same consequence as, and maybe even worse, because these people who have already been receiving services, it'd be worse for them to be thrown out onto the street and be expected to be homeless again.
Thank you, we need to wrap it up, if you would, please.
So we urge you to follow the principle that the mayor has articulated, and the advice of the LA Times editorial board. Find a way to continue sheltering the current residents of Railroad Drive. I'm not going to tell you to keep that shelter going, but you absolutely must keep those people sheltered off the streets.
Mike, you need to wrap it up, please.
And to provide the services that they are getting.
Thank you, sir. That's it. Thank you. We really appreciate it. I appreciate all your leadership. I just, we got to keep it to two minutes. You work very hard on these issues, and we really appreciate you, okay?
Noel Cameraman, then Howard Lawrence.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the North Sacramento triage shelter. The importance of providing shelter to Sacramentoans who are experiencing homelessness cannot be expressed as we continue to feel the effects of the economy and the statewide housing crisis that is upon us. The longer the people live out on the streets without shelter, the greater the risk of injury or long-term health issues, including mental health, substance abuse, and medical. Please note that folks who are homeless are everywhere, and the more we can stabilize men, women, and children with shelter and services, the better equipped we are to connect them to an income, and then permanent housing out in the community. Housing is ultimately the solution to homelessness, and every person who is connected to housing will result in fewer calls to 911, fewer emergency room visits, thus saving the community money, but more importantly, resulting in ending a person's homelessness. I would encourage you to continue to look at other policy changes to further facilitate the development of housing within the community, including the return of inclusionary zoning. I would also encourage a more coordinated approach to homeless services by connecting with the continuum of care and other entities providing shelter in Sacramento in order to develop one unified waitlist for all shelters in the Sacramento area, thus streamlining the process of entry into shelter. Thank you so much for your work on this triage shelter. It is an important and impactful service to those who are experiencing homelessness as well as the community. Just a quick question for Emily. How many total exits from the shelter do we have at this point in time?
I think to date, we have 100 who have exited.
So out of those 100 that have exited from the shelter, so we've had 20 that have either gone on to transitional housing or to permanent housing situations.
I believe it's 36, is that correct, who have exited to something that is, 34, thank you, 34, it's either housing transitional or to another temporary location that's not unsheltered.
But if we look at just the transitional numbers and the permanent housing numbers, so 20 of those, 100 exits roughly, have gone on to a more stable housing situation. And granted, the shelter, even though it's a temporary shelter, it's still in its infancy. That's actually a pretty solid start to any brand-new shelter, to be able to have that kind of exit rate. So good work on that.
Thanks so much. Appreciate you.
Next speaker is Howard Lawrence, then Pastor Gainsborough.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg. Members of the city council, my name's Howard Lawrence. I'm one of the ACT delegates here this evening, and as you all know, ACT is a faith-based community organizing network. And so tonight, I'm going to speak a little more from the faith perspective. You know, scripture teaches us that we're required to take care of the needs of the unfortunate among us. Indeed, to be in right relationship with our God, we must care for the widows and the orphans among us, and I would add the homeless population to that list.[1502.01][1502.01](applause) We want to recognize and express our appreciation for the city's bold effort to establish a triage center here in the city of Sacramento. This is something that we, as an organization, have called for for a number of years, and we appreciate the effort to build a comprehensive effort to change the conditions. We want to work with you on that. Support very much the comments made by Mr. Cameraman regarding the unified approach to seek shelter. I would add that we need to also look at a sustained source of funding for affordable housing in this community, and that has to be part of our plan. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Pastor Gainsborough, then Annette Emery.
Emily, you've done a great job, Mayor and council. I commend you on the innovation. Henry Ford created the Model T, but he didn't put a reverse in it. That came after the Model T was innovated and started. So the triage that you have started is a good beginning. It's innovative and commendable that you included pets, with over 100 dogs there, and now 10 service cats. The backup services with the Whole Person Pathways Program and the Prop 63 funding, and the $20 million you're asking the city to help provide, is all part of a flotilla. If Britain had fallen to Hitler and the Nazi army, when they overran France and they sacrificed 3,000 or 4,000 troops in a diversion default to allow Dunkirk with every available vessel in Britain that was 20 feet or longer, they rescued 300,000 troops that helped Europe not fall. And what you are doing is commendable. Just a few statistics that the police helped us with seeing the social impact. Vehicle burglary dropped by 300% from 21 to 6. That's a little over 300%. House burglary almost dropped in half from 7 to 4 in the 5-mile area. Larceny theft dropped in half, 50% from 14 to 7. Vandalism dropped by over a half from 7 to 3 cases. And weapon violations was cut in half. I know my time is up, but the triage concept, I brought it to the council a year and a half ago, I've been speaking it for a year and a half every week. You are doing good work. It needs to be multiplied. The community needs to stand behind you. These are valuable, precious human beings, your sons, daughters, grandchild, and granddaughters and grandsons.
Thanks, Pastor.
God bless you for your work. Keep it.
Thank you, Pastor.
Next speaker is Annette Emery, then Erica Harden.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Annette Emery, president of the Garland and Northgate Neighborhood Association, and I want to speak in support of the winter triage shelter on Railroad Avenue, which is right next to Northgate Boulevard.
Boulevard, thank you.
And I think people forget about this. And for the homeless, Northgate's a pretty attractive place. We have dollar stores and very inexpensive restaurants. And we do see all the tents along the river, which is troublesome. I live near the American River. I'd like to be able to walk and think that there's not people living there doing things that human beings do. And when I talk to my neighbors in my neighborhood, I'm so proud of them, they all say there should be more beds, that they are supportive of this shelter. And when I heard that the Volunteers of America were going to run this, I was so happy, because the year before, Stanford Settlement had opened up their doors for the homeless. And VOA does an excellent job. It was very clean, it was neat, very organized. Last Sunday, I went by Railroad Avenue. One thing I noticed, there's less trash on Railroad Avenue than there is on Northview, one of my sore spots in the area. So I appreciate that. And that it's not just a willy-nilly, anarchistic place. There are volunteers, they only allow people in who are allowed. I saw the bicycles, I saw people sitting out in the sun playing card together, great community. So we, I want this shelter to remain open. I would like more shelters. I would like more shelters. It's inhumane to have people sleeping in this cold weather on the river without services. So thank you for this humane start, and I can tell you that my neighborhood, from what I've talked to my neighbors, they are supportive of the shelter, and thank you.
Thank you so much for coming tonight, Annette.
Next speaker is Erica Harden, and then Alicia Sebastian.
Good evening, Mayor, city mayor, city manager, and council members. My name is Erica Harden, and I am the president of the Natomas Community Association. I want to first thank you all for supporting and approving this shelter. It's well-needed, and it's done quite well. I want to say that I show my continued support, and anything we can do to help, we are here to do that. Rome wasn't built in a day, so it's going to take time, but I have seen the difference in the streets, and I believe that the numbers proved it tonight. I'd like to let the people know that are listening and watching that are saying that no homeless in our neighborhoods, or we don't want that around here. We need to all keep in mind that we're all just one paycheck away from being homeless. We know where we've been, but we don't know where we're going. So I want to do a special thank you to Sacramento PD, Volunteers of America, Pathways to Health and Home, the Front Shelter, and anyone else that I might have met, oh, and the Impact Team. God bless you all, and have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alicia Sebastian, then Robert Copeland.
Over here where I can see everyone.
Either one.
Good evening. I'm Alicia Sebastian, and along with Larry Glover Mead, I serve as the co-chair of the North Sacramento Advisory Committee on Homelessness. At the recommendation of Mayor Steinberg and council member Warren, the committee was created as a basis for community input and the development of a good neighbor policy regarding the placement of a temporary winter shelter in North Sacramento. The committee is specifically tasked with reporting on any impacts the shelter may have in District 2. The committee hopes to be seen as an ally and a resource, not only to the city and service providers, but also to our community's many businesses and neighbors who share the city's concerns and the mayor's commitment to addressing homelessness within Sacramento. You have received the monthly report coinciding with what is understood to be the midway point of the temporary winter shelters operations. Through Paladin and 311 records, observable data, and community surveys, the community has reported markedly more people experiencing homelessness and has felt the impacts of this increase, such as vandalism, vagrancy, waste, refuse, and disruptive behavior. We're confident that with the opening of additional, smaller shelters throughout Sacramento and the region, and with a smaller shelter model in North Sacramento, our community would feel less of this impact. We do not doubt that there have been successes within the current model. However, the committee has yet to see the inside of the shelter. And although the VOA has been willing to meet with us and has held other meetings in the community, we have not been able to meet with them as a committee. We have struggled to access information and data from the city, and often, we're the last to know about critical decisions being made in our community. We want to be a part of the solution, but feel we haven't been given the full opportunity.
So you're looking for a tour of the shelter, a meeting with the VOA?
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Well, I think we can try to arrange that. The other thing I think that's really important is that you sit down with law enforcement here, because they certainly have a different impression than some of the reports that you are putting forward, not just you, but some of the folks on your committee. So I think it would be helpful if there was some sort of reconciliation of at least the facts here. When they say 48% reduction in crime over the time period, and you're saying it's worse, I think there needs to be a sit-down so that there could be some common understanding. And I believe you are in good faith, by the way, and that you would do that. I think that there are some people from the community, some, and there are very few, who will oppose this under any circumstances. You could have a 150% decrease in crime, and they would still oppose it because it's philosophical for some, not for all. That's not you, Alicia. I know you. You're good faith. But there are some who aren't. So I'm going to call it like it is. And until you sit down, your group sits down with law enforcement and actually reconciles some of these numbers, so that you can't just say in a letter that things are worse, but it's actually based upon, on facts and documentation, I think that's a very important part of the process as well.
May I respond really briefly?
Yes, of course.
We have had the opportunity to meet, and gratefully so. We weren't able to access data at that point. So absolutely, we'd like to revisit that. That's exactly the crux of this issue, which is how do we, as a committee, reconcile this if we are struggling to get this data? Tonight was the first night we've seen this information. We're eager to look at it. We do know, though, that community members also are feeling things that are different. We are looking at Paladin reports. We are looking at 311 calls. So understanding what that looks like at a deeper level.
Fair enough.
Do I have a moment to finish my statement?
Yeah, please finish. I'm sorry, because I interrupted you. I'm sorry.
No worries. You actually touched on some of the things that we're getting to, which is that the North Sacramento and the members of this committee hold very diverse perspectives. And while we often disagree on details, I do not doubt our collective commitment to serving our communities most vulnerable. And if we are asked to have faith in our elected officials and trust in the public process, we ask and we need you to have faith in us and trust us in this process as well. We hope you will join us Thursday for community meeting, and we look forward to continuing this critical conversation.
Thank you so much for your excellent testimony. We appreciate it.
Next speaker is Robert Copeland, and then Faygo.
Well, I have a few questions that were not on the presentation. Nobody else asked. How many people apply for access site in these shelters or veterans benefits, CalFresh benefits? How many people want job training that were able to work? And where's the housing going to come from? The 2,400, if you get three, 200 bed shelters, 90 days a year, where are they going to come This is a good start, but I think the jury's still out, in my opinion. I'd like to have Emily Calicon or somebody answer these questions.
Just to give your testimony. We'll do it in summary. The statistics are clear. There are 30-some-odd people that have found housing, either transitional or permanent.
And how many people actually remain in housing, are going to remain in housing? Oh, there are 30-some people. And anybody get their ID that didn't have ID at the time?
I'm going to have Amani come up from VOA in a minute, maybe can answer some of those questions.
They can take my rest of my time.
Thanks a lot, Robert. Amani and Rachel, come on up if you want. Let's finish the two speakers, then Amani, we'll have you after the two speakers, okay, and Rachel.
My last two speakers are Faygo and then Fong.
Mr. Clark, are you coming up?
So I do want to start off saying this is a start. I'm glad that there was over 200 people that were able to not have to sleep outside during some of the worst parts of the weather, and that they were able to keep their pets and keep families together. That's very crucial. I do kind of find it disturbing still that through this process, only 34 people, which makes up approximately 29% of the amount of people we had die last year, were housed. We had 108 people die last year, but even with this, we're only able to house 34. So we're still having more people die per year than we are housing them.
Two months, Faygo.
True, true. Good point. But still, that's not the best numbers yet. You know, I'm hoping that we'll start by the end of the year, seeing that number be more than the number of people we have dying, because that's really important. Making sure that we have more of these things all over the city is also a really important thing. So I like that you're looking into that. And I like that you're looking at trying to find a way to make sure that these people aren't put back out onto the streets, because as one who's been out here for a long time, when you get offered help and then it doesn't come through, you lose faith in the people offering it. And then you become much more reluctant to accept it. There's also, you know, people are complaining that there might be a rise in the people experiencing homelessness. That's still happening all over the city. You know, the number of people entering homelessness has gone up, period. So even if you're housing 200 or getting 200 off the streets, that's not necessarily making a dent in the number of people that are entering homelessness. So I think we need to continue doing things like this. We need to make it more robust, and we need to make sure that there's more of them, as well as repealing ordinances that make it harder and make people more reluctant to accept this kind of help, like the anti-camping ordinance. Maybe we could find a way to work it in where there's sanction camps where they can keep it cleaner, have a daily trash pickup, and have a way where they're not interfering with the daily lives of other people enjoying the river.
Time is up, Mr. Clark. Thank you so much.
And our last speaker on this item is Fong.
Then I'm going to go to the council before I have Amani and Rachel come up, okay? Go ahead.
So there's still 13,000 people that are sleeping outside in the cold with all the, you know, with the hail that you saw yesterday, last two days. People, I don't have the number of how many people died in the last two days, but 13,000 people are still homeless. And to house 264, it is not enough. We've asked for you to declare this as an emergency situation, and it's still, we're still living in parallel worlds. I don't know what kind of success you're talking about, but the Impact Team as trash pickup, that's really interesting. Most of the trash that they pick up are possibly the gears that people use to live. So as they are picking up trash, they are also killing people. So we're having this parallel world, same thing that we're still seeing. And we still have people that are still trying to, you know, I noticed that you cut off my comment about women that have to change their tampons and their menstrual sanitary pads. That's people living. They don't have a place to change. They need bathrooms. They need water fountains. We still have that problem. Those are basic needs. If we can address the basic needs, then people can start dealing with their mental health or drug issues. We still need that. We still need the anti-camping ordinance.
Time is up. Thank you.
Address. So, you know, it's very interesting that you give people extra time if they are...
Continue to the two minutes. Thank you.
No, no, actually, you allow...
Next.
Continue to talk. So you just don't want me to tell you the damn truth.
Councilmember Harris, let's go to the city council. I'm sorry, were you first?
I don't know. I'm stuck in the queue.
Okay, cleared it once out before, okay.
I'll do whatever you want.
Why don't we start with councilmember Harris, councilmember Hanson, councilmember Carr, then we'll go to councilmember Ashby, okay? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, this triage center is in District 3, and District 3 is deeply impacted by homelessness because the river runs through it. And a large percentage of the homeless population likes to live along the river, but there's also the preponderance of services in the River District, which is a tremendous attractant. This triage shelter is something that I've wanted to happen ever since I was elected, and thanks to Whole Person Care money and MHSA money, thank you, Mayor, very much, it came to fruition. It became a possibility. Doing social services is not what the city does. It's not our mandate, and we've never approached this before, but the impacts of homelessness have become so severe in Sacramento that we needed to do this for humanitarian reasons, but also to make life tenable in the city for people who are housed and unhoused both. This triage shelter follows the physician's credo, which is first, do no harm. The triage shelter, I think, as the data has shown, has not impacted adversely any of the surrounding communities, whether it's Woodlake, Del Paso, or up North Gate, Gardenland. It didn't really help much in the River District, but the fact of the matter is, the resources that we allocated to police the area have created good effects. But I'll tell you what, getting 34 people off the streets, and these are chronically homeless individuals with a wide array of problems, barriers to being successful in a housed situation, that's extraordinary. Each of these people has cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars over the numbers of years that they've been living unhoused on the parkway. That's in mitigating the trash that they create, in transporting them to emergency rooms principally, to jails as well, dealing with the mental health issues. To house 34 people in two months is extraordinary. These are people who have refused services for years on end. Something about this triage shelter hit that magic chord. It's because it's 24/7, and Jonathan, you've been right all this time, we needed 24/7 triage, and now we have it. It works. It really works. This, I've spent a lot of time at this shelter, and I've got a tremendous number of personal stories from the people who sought shelter there after being years, years outdoors, living on the parkway. What brought them in? Probably how difficult it is to live outdoors, the lack of safety, the lack of food, the lack of any comfort at all. There is a sociology that happens out on the parkway. There are people who have been out there a long time who have become leaders. Well, one of those leaders found his way into the shelter, and many more followed. It's been an extraordinary thing to witness and to talk to the people who finally chose to accept services and are starting now to envision a different life for themselves. You know, I'll tell you what, creature comforts are a good thing, especially in winter. Being fed, having someone to talk to, someone who's willing to listen to what your problems are and help you envision a different way forward in your life is pretty extraordinary. I'm very proud of this effort that we've done, and I have to thank Emily and Andrew and Amani. Pam and Greg have been absolutely essential in making this happen, but also Gina from the animal shelter. It wouldn't work without Front Street at all. All the players who have stepped up to do this incredibly difficult work, you know, after spending many hours at the shelter, I can tell you, this is not an easy lift. This is not in any way easy work to do, but it's necessary work. And, you know, the mayor really hit virtually all of the points about the benefits of the shelter and the fact that it has not had adverse impacts on the immediate community, and that we should take this model and carry it forward until we reach our goal that the mayor has articulated many times of getting 2,000 people off the streets in the next three years. We can do this. Y'all need to bear in mind that homelessness in other West Coast cities far surpasses our population. Every single West Coast city of our size or bigger has populations north of 10,000 unhoused people. And we know from our counts and observation, largely from impact and the point-in-time count, our chronicly unhoused population runs around 3,600 people, and we know that there are 2,000 people in the city of Sacramento outdoors on a nightly basis. Well, we just housed about 10%. That is remarkable in two months. It's actually an incredible achievement. Again, these are people who are not folks that can easily resolve. There's a lot of people outdoors who have fewer barriers to being successful in a housing situation. We do need more capacity. We need a fair amount more capacity, and we certainly are going to take every effort that we can to keep this shelter open or move into other locations. I've talked about this before, that finding locations to do triage is not at all easy. It's very costly to open them up, to make sure they're conditioned for success. In this particular situation, it was just an open warehouse. Didn't have heat, didn't have enough lighting, didn't have any partitions for privacy and for segregating people who needed to be away from the others. These are management tools that cost us a lot of money and a lot of volunteer labor, I might add, to effect, but all of them work. All of them work. This is a great investment by the city of Sacramento. So, you know, I get it, we didn't house everybody immediately, but we're doing a lot more than a lot of the other cities, all up and down the West Coast. This is a magnificent effort, and once again, I'm really proud of what we achieved. And, Mr. Mayor, I thank you for your efforts and your drive to make sure that we finally got on this path. Every single person who's worked on the shelter has my deepest regards. It's really, it's the way forward. We need more of it. We're going to work for it. It's very costly. It's your taxpayer dollars that are going to help pay for this, but it's an effort that really needs to happen if we're going to live in a city that we all can be proud of, where we don't have indigenous people living in poverty on the streets, and we're not confronted with belligerent behavior of people who are mentally infirm, and where there's not trash everywhere we look. This is the way forward. This is a great start. I think we've got a fantastic program, and we need to carry it forward. Thank you.
Harris. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Steinberg.
Yeah, Mayor, whatever, whatever.
Just teasing you a little bit. There's a lot to say here. Much of it's been said. I want to just remind the council where we started in, I think it was late 2013, when we worked on the Common Sense Program that sort of started this effort. That's really the progenitor era where we want... That's really the progenitor era, where we wanted to put a million dollars a year into homelessness because the city could do more, and we realized the problem was so great, there wasn't enough going on. It's also when we decided to hire the wonderful Emily Halkin, and she's now multiplied into Emily and Andrew. But at that time, we acknowledged that there are many fragile people out there, many medically fragile people in addition to the mental health issues, but that also some of the most vulnerable people weren't being well-served by the system because of the barriers in the system, both to self-navigate, and then also because they often were unable to advocate for themselves in the appropriate ways. So it left the most fragile people being unserved, and the more capable people absorbing their resources. And I say that because now what we're talking about tonight is sort of an inverse of that. And the most medically fragile, to a large extent, not everybody in the shelter is as medically fragile as the people on the streets may be, but we're serving a population here that is unhealthy. From a physical standpoint, probably have several coexisting conditions. In addition, many of them, because of the adversity of their position, have developmental health challenges that when you're outside, you, you can't treat, let alone the ongoing acute issues of their body. So by giving them a place to be, we've kept them out of our ambulances and out of emergency rooms, and begun to help them address the deeper needs that they have in order to become stable. And not every one of these people will, will return to a life that many of us would hope for them because of their medical limitations, but it does give them some dignity and quality of life that you can't necessarily get in other ways. Councilmember Harris, I thought it was great to acknowledge some of the partners. VOA is certainly our most critical partner in this. The Front Street Shelter, when I did my tour, staff from the Front Street Shelter were coming over to this shelter on their break because they couldn't, they didn't have enough resources to staff the Front Street operation and the shelter, so the staff there on their own free time were coming to help people with their animals. The low barrier nature of this, that we allow in partners, animals, and we, we've begun to bring in people who were, who needed those lower barriers, that's just a testament to the, the idea that treating the hardest to treat will overall help the community's health and the, the people who are most vulnerable. And, and that's not always very popular, I think, because they don't necessarily have the ability to show up here and make a statement. And I think the data clearly says, if one person had been homeless, again, self-reported, for 40 years, that person alone is a great example of the value of the shelter, because if you think about that person's needs in the rest of the community, there's no reason we can't help that person until we do something like this. And so the idea that we would somehow end this arbitrarily, I, I think speaks to the challenge before us. It, it certainly can be contextualized as a monetary challenge. I know that the city continues to work to find ways to meet all the different needs of the public, and certainly we have a variety of needs, but we also have a variety of opportunities that we struggle to fulfill. Pastor Gainesborough talked about, you know, those least among us and what we owe them. And certainly, leaving them to, to die in the parkway or to die on the streets is not an appropriate social response, religious response, or community response. But I, I do want to underscore for a second the fact that we used to get funding from the federal and state governments for transitional housing and shelters. So the fact that the city has to pay for this isn't the way it always was. It is a clear policy decision by federal policymakers and state policymakers to end funding for services like this, that have placed this on the back of the city. Other jurisdictions don't have the courage to try to do this on their own, with their own resources, because they'd rather spend it on other things. So I really want to applaud our city staff for being very thoughtful about this, and the mayor and the council for, for being willing to do this. Five million dollars over the course of the year in a budget that is close to $500 million annually is a small fraction, 1% of our overall budget. It's not going to crowd out other services, but it does provide an immense benefit. That being said, the mayor has called for the state to, along with 11 other mayors, to pony up $1.5 to $2 billion to help cities like ours deal with this crisis, and we absolutely have to be supportive of that. The legislators, many of them live in my district, and I think, Mayor, we could go door-to-door talking to them in their own homes, because I hear from them about their complaints about our homeless population.
Everywhere.
In, in my district. They will ask for things, and, and they don't make the connection between their own policy decisions and the very needs that they experience as legislators living in my district, and I always find that to be very interesting. Not all of them are like that, some of them do fully understand it. I also know there's a housing bond on the ballot, there's a new real estate transfer fee. We have to harness those things to generate multifamily housing that's affordable, permanent supportive housing. But also, one of the things that we have not talked about, it's, it's essential, and it's disappeared over 20 years, are board and care facilities. Board and care facilities are the type of shelter that will help these fragile people stay, live with a better quality of life, but those smaller houses that may have six or 10 beds, they've essentially disappeared from the landscape over the last 20 years for a variety of reasons. That is a way to, rather than having to create big shelters or big facilities, we can distribute them throughout the community and work with the community, and largely, they do coexist in the community well. I think we really need to focus on all those different parts of the housing spectrum as we do this. And I know it, it is a favorite thing to bash the market rate housing that's getting built, but if we have an increase in population and the housing supply is constrained, guess who gets priced out? It's the people at the bottom. If we don't continue to build market rate housing at a sufficient quantity, then the people who will be least able to adapt to the, the rent increases will be the ones pushed out. And that's not to say that those, that that's perfect, but supply is a key answer to how we do prevention. The downtown streets team, I, I did call earlier, sorry, late last year on us to bring them here, I'm happy to see that, but I think we need it scaled up so that we can really embrace those people who can and want to work, and help them get the job training, and, and honestly, just their own feelings of dignity and self-enfranchisement back, so they feel empowered to return to a gainful life. And that's a great way to do it. We are working, I know we had some public comment earlier around sharps and needle disposal, we are working with Harm Reduction Services. We're out to bid right now, and I believe they've responded on a proposal to engage them in needle disposal, education, cleanup, to really help mitigate some of those impacts. Finally, though, Mayor, one of the things that I think, I really want to try to bring the council together around, if we can, is you have your seven points, and I can't repeat those as articulately as you, but I have three things that are in my triangle. Effective present, prevention of homelessness through things like rapid rehousing, landlord-tenant help, the increased supply.
That was among...
Of all of them. Really working with the community to keep people housed. Intervention, which is once people have fallen into homelessness, you know, whole person care is a great example, and how we're working with the county and the healthcare organizations, Sutter, Sacramento Covered, on all of that. Sacramento steps forward to intervene. But then this enforcement piece about how we send the message to the greater community that we will continue to ensure that the, the management of the public space is done well. It's, it's not necessarily popular with the people who sit here every Tuesday night, but that opportunity to manage how people feel and their goodwill towards their brothers and sisters on the street, I think will really help balance out our, our desire to invest millions of dollars into this effort, to continue to work with our partners, but also tell the community that we care. And the NORSAC information presented tonight, an 83% reduction because we have properly staffed for those issues, is a strong sign that we can build trust between neighbors, service providers, and the homeless community, and continue to make sure that we're dealing with the people who need our services the most. And so I, I really think that this is a phenomenal project. These were longer comments than I intended, but Mayor, you deserve the utmost admiration for your leadership on this and your courage, but we do need our Congresswoman, our senators, and the legislature to help us.
No doubt. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Carr, for switching up with me in the order there. Got a little sideways. So I, the mayor knows I have a sort of mixed feelings on this item. The, the first thing, and I, sometimes I can get myself in trouble because I'm always brutally honest, and I just always say exactly what I think, and I sometimes probably go too far with that. But on this particular issue, absent from the shelter, just the issue of homelessness and how the city of Sacramento is going to proceed, I have told the mayor since day one, literally day one for him, that he's very brave on this topic, and he set an expectation that in some ways is unachievable, but he knows that because he wants to challenge himself and this city and this council to get farther than we've ever gotten before. So if he were to set sort of a easily achievable goal and we hit it, that wouldn't be far enough for him. And I really like that. I like that in this mayor, and I like that in leaders that, you know, aren't, don't, don't take the safe bet. That's really easy to do when you're in one of these seats, and he doesn't do that. But when there's risk, there's also going to be some failures, and I think it's really important we admit those failures because those make us stronger as we go along, or at least that's been my experience in life. I've failed a lot of times, and I'm always feel stronger after I get back up and brush myself off. And I just, I think we're foolish if we sit here today and think, it's perfect, let's keep going, keep working out the money. That would be a mistake. There are lots of things here to improve. It is terrific capacity, what, what we've done here is worth noting. You're trying things, you're being creative, everyone, but really you. You know, there's a lot of people implementing, really you. And that's to be applauded. I toured the shelter, and there's a lot of room for improvement in what it feels like to be in that shelter. And for its amenities, right? It's a port of potties, they're outside. It's a port of showers, they're outside. It is a warehouse. I know it was intended to be temporary, and it's easy to be critical of something that's temporary, so I'm trying not to do that. But I am trying to see where if we're going to do something like this, we have to be better, right? I was not happy that there were 90 dogs in there. It's resulted in like three dog bites, one dog going down, two dogs being quarantined. I think that's going to take some work on our part to figure that out, because there are some people that are scared of the dogs that are in there. And so that, that's going to take some effort. I don't have the right answer. I think the VOA staff did a really great job because they started with one strategy, recognized that wasn't working, and went to a much better strategy, and that helped a lot. So that tells me if we keep working on that issue, maybe we can get to a, something that really works for everybody on that one. It's just a, a tiny example. That shelter's not great for food, because you have to bring everything in, there isn't like a kitchen there or anything, and the same spaces that you're sitting in all day are the same areas where you're eating, so it'll be wonderful when we can have some more designated spaces and things are a little bit more predictable for the people that are there. There are components to this that I questioned tonight in the presentation, because the numbers are different than what I was told when I visited the site and I talked to people there. And when we do presentations, sometimes, you know, we really want to present our, put our best foot forward on like what we did right. And I think in this instance, what we did right was that we took a lot of people in from the cold. And all the people that came in from the cold had a much better winter so far than they would have, you know, wherever they were. But the amount of people that are housed as a result of being in this shelter is a number I think is, is being inflated, in my opinion. I think there are eight that you very clearly took care of, but beyond that eight, I think there's, you know, people who reconnected with family, people who just left, people who found, were doing a couple of things, talking to our shelter, talking to other people. When I went out there, there was activity out there that didn't belong out there. I pulled up with the chief, and the first thing he had to do was make a stop. Before we could even get out of the vehicle, he had to make a stop of a person who wasn't in the shelter, but came to visit someone in the shelter and was doing donuts out in front and had little kids in the backseat of the car, not in car seats. Just really inappropriate, right? And so there, I, I question the correlation between opening the shelter and the reduction in crime. I think the reduction in crime, because you'd have to believe that homeless people were committing all those crimes, to believe that opening the shelter meant that they are now not committing the crimes, I don't think that's fair or accurate. I do think that having a larger police presence as a result of the shelter is the reason you have the reduction in crime. And so an increased presence by the police department clearly has had a positive impact on the community surrounding the shelter. That I get, but to extend that correlation to actually having people in the shelter, I think goes a step too far. And, and I just want to be honest about how or why we get to those results, so that if our result, if our goal is to knock down crime in the area, which was one of the goals, that we recognize what it was that did that, right? And I believe that, the reward for that goes clearly back to SAC PD. One of the thing, components on this program that I think is wonderful is the downtown streets team. I'm with Jay on this one. That is a terrific program. More of that would be great. It shouldn't be confused to be believed that it's downtown, it's not. That's just the name of the program. It's just a program that helps people start working. And I know that was an important component to you, Mayor, and I think that was a terrific addition to this and something we could do more of, because in my experience, before I was on this council, I worked a lot with people who were returning from prison and trying to help make sure they didn't recidivate. And I always felt that the best programs, I still feel, the best programs were work-based, not housing-based, because when people had a job, then they had the ability to build a life around that. And I think that is a really important quotient when you're working with populations with barriers to success, and I think it's the stepping off point. That's just my opinion. My biggest concern here isn't that we not do anything. My biggest concern is, are we doing the right things? It's a lot of money. $400,000 a month is the price tag on this shelter, and that is a lot of money. Just after three months, you know, that puts it at $4,500 per individual, and if the individuals are stagnant and don't move, as they so far have been pretty stagnant, that number only goes up. So if it stayed roughly the same as it is now, after five months, it would be $7,500 per individual in the shelter, and that's with outdoor bathrooms and outdoor showers and not having a whole lot of wraparound services. Just juxtapose that, okay? The county did not fund St. John's Women's Shelter, so they've got 300 beds open for a year. In order, if we wanted to help fund those 300 beds, 300 people for a year, it would be $700,000. That's less than two months of the shelter with 260 people, and it's not outdoor toilets, and it's not outdoor showers, and it has a lot of wraparound services, and it is an employment-based model. So I, I'm, I just worry that we spend the money in the most effective, most efficient way. Obviously, we have to start somewhere, and this is where I really applaud the mayor, because it's easy to say we need more housing. We definitely do. And so you could say, don't do triage till we have housing, or don't do housing till we have triage, but you had to start somewhere, and, and this is where we have started, and it is going to be messy until we get all the other pieces in place. That said, we got to find a way to housing. We have to add more housing stock, and Councilmember Hanson's right, housing at any level, anywhere in the spectrum of housing helps us. So we have to do that. All across our city, we have to work on housing. And as to the hospital partners, and Mayor, your commitment to raise money for this, that is the key, because we don't have $400,000 a month to run this shelter, much less additional shelters at $400,000 a month throughout the city. And I just want to be really clear, I'm one council member, but we don't have that. That is not an option. It is not an option for us to go to our general fund or our reserve and take $400,000 a month for, from now until... for, from now until wherever, opening shelters around the city. We cannot do it. If people want to come in and the hospitals want to partner, or the county wants to get involved in mental health services, would be great, or the state or the federal government wants to do as Councilmember Hanson has suggested they have in the past and fund shelters, then fantastic, we can be a conduit. But it is not something that the city can do to take $400,000 a month and pay for a brand-new service. It is not. It's not. For a short period, yes, and there is some money set aside to do this for a bit longer, but that is not something that is sustainable into the long term. We cannot do it. And that is really a plea to my colleagues to think about how we fund this and how we support him. I want to help him, and I want to support him, but I want to make sure we're solvent on the other end of the decisions that we make today. The emergency rooms need to be included. They are not included in the last three months, and Emily and I have talked about this, they have not been included. My husband runs one of the emergency rooms at night downtown, and I asked for him to be included, and they were not. So people are not going from the emergency rooms to the shelter now. That's not something that's happening. It is something I heard everybody up here say they wanted to have happen, but it did not actually happen. So that's a problem, and it's one we need to solve so that the partner agencies come on and realize the same types of successes that we're looking for. For me, I, the mayor has my support, and he wants to do, go about this and start with triage, then I'm with him. But we have to make sure that we have the money coming from the right sources. We don't jeopardize our reserve or the city general fund, and, you know, if that means, Mayor, that I have to help you raise money, then I will do it. And if it means that, you know, we're going to start here, but then housing's a quick second behind, then we need to do that. And I just want to put it out there on the record now, I'm in support of him and I will help him, but it can't come from our general fund, and it has to be the most effective solution, and we have to be willing to look at places where we could potentially be more effective with more people and be open-minded to that if those opportunities arise.
Thank you very much. Good comments. I appreciate, appreciate the honesty. It's good. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a chance to go out to the shelter as well. Thank you, Andrew, for showing me around. I found it to be somewhat chaotic, and I was surprised by the number of pit bulls that people have there. And it didn't seem to be an environment where someone who had an emotional or mental issue could begin to heal. I think that Councilmember Ashby is right. I know we can make that better. But the first thing that struck me on the slide was 52% of the people in the shelter were not contacted by the navigators. What does that say about our navigator program?
So I just want to give a little nuance because I don't want it to appear as if we're throwing the navigator program under the ground. What that 52% means is that we do not have a record of them in our homeless management information system. And Andrew is correct that had these folks been contacted by a navigator, primarily SSF but other partnering agencies as well, and they had done an assessment on the folks, then that record would exist. However, if the navigator had reached out and contacted them and the person said, "No, thank you," or "Go away" or something else, there might not be a record. So it's not 100% that they haven't been contacted by navigator, what it means they haven't engaged in services. And I'd say that, you know, our navigators are amazing partners, and we are lucky to have them, and we don't have enough of them. And to the mayor's point and others' points, you know, one of the things we're hoping to do is expand outreach touches. Right now, a lot of our navigation services are very light touch. They may go out, interact one day and not be able to return for a significant amount of time. What we're hoping to do with Whole Person Care is to change that approach so that it's assertive and so that if I say no today, tomorrow I'm approached again and again and again until we can get to yes. So I think that there is definitely a correlation and that these are people who have been outside of the system, but it might not be purely indicative that they haven't ever encountered a navigator, they just may have not gotten to the point of actually engaging in services. And with this population, that's a real, it could sometimes be a time lapse.
When the navigator touches them for the first time, they don't collect name, age, or anything? They don't collect any data?
It sometimes depends on the willingness of the person. If the person is willing and able at that moment, then it might happen, but again, it's with this population, the people that we've seen, it, there's trust breakdowns, there's lack of confidence in the system, and so oftentimes, the first interaction might just be a friendly, "Hi, how are you?" You know, "Are you interested in services? Are you interested in talking to me? Are you interested in sharing anything about yourself?" And if that answer is no, which it is for a lot of different reasons, then there might not be a record.
How much are we putting into the navigator program?
So the navigator program that is the sort of first iteration, as the vice mayor said, with SSF Common Sense, the city is no longer, that's no longer our conduit for navigation. SSF still has navigators through the PBIDs, through RT, and through some other places. What we, we are now partnering with Sacramento Covered for navigation services. They call them community health workers. It's just another name for kind of the same thing. That is through Whole Person Care. Currently, we have a very small contract because as the mayor said, we're just, we're ramping up that program. So we have, I don't know the number offhand, but a small, a small component. On April 1st is our full launch, and we aim to have four to five to six teams of navigators, peer workers, care coordinators, mental health clinicians, housing support specialists, working both in a broader geography and with more quantities of people. So that, those reports should be in front of you at the end of March. But right now, because we're sort of in this transition between our SSF approach to comment, to pathways, there has been a little bit of a loss in our ability to outreach.
Okay. Well, we'll be looking forward to that report and the results that those navigators are supposed to get us because if we're paying money to make contacts and we're not collecting the basic information, and we have half of a population of 200 that haven't been touched, then I'm concerned about that. But the bigger question, I guess, is a philosophical question, and it hits on sort of what Councilmember Ashby was saying. If the homeless population is a continuum, on one end, you have people who are down on their luck, just lost their ability to house themselves, who need an address so they can find a job. And on the other end, you have people who need extensive services. What we have chosen to do is target the extensive services people, and we're getting the results that you would expect to see from targeting that population. Wouldn't we be able to get more homeless people off the street if we got the low-hanging fruit, gave people an address, helped them get a job, helped them get into services, and reduced the total number of people, given that you're going to have the hard cases left at the end? But you would reduce the total population of homeless people a lot earlier.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point, and I think that one of the things that Chris mentioned in his opening remarks is that this is one program amongst a broader system. And so while the city's winter triage shelter certainly is targeting the population you described, the very hardest to serve, the most entrenched, we have other partners, both shelter partners and rapid rehousing programs, so at our community, that are touching more of what you might call the low-hanging fruit, recently homeless, maybe homeless because of an economic crisis. It's certainly not a perfect system, and I think that there is some fair critiques that we should make of how that system is connected, how the homeless population understands access, because that is a very fair criticism that it's not, it's not very clear. And so I think it's important to support those existing programs and to make sure that they can sort of catch with their safety net services those folks that are recently homeless, because the last thing we want to do is force them to become the new chronically homeless. And I think it's fair to say there's probably a quantity issue on both ends, a quantity of service challenge on both ends. And I think that one of the things I was sort of jotting down as I was hearing some of the comments from all of you is that I think in the final report, I'd like to put this shelter a little bit more in the context of the broader system of care. For the mid-season, we sort of did a quick review, but I'd really like to put it in the context of how are other partner programs that the county runs, that our VOA and our other service organizations run, put this in the context of some of those outcomes because I think it's really important to your point is to, is to look at how this fits into the broader system and isn't, it is adding to our capacity.
So the way these people were contacted, the ones who were in the shelter, someone just went out to the river and started contacting people who hadn't been contacted and bringing them into the system?
Well, we worked really closely with Greg and his team. Greg might be able to give you a lot more detail, and I might ask him to do that, but we worked really hard in the encampments right in and around the shelter. It happened to be, and I don't think I was surprised, and maybe Greg wasn't surprised, that many of those folks were off of our radar, but we worked intensely for two weeks, three weeks prior to the shelter opening and continued to work. So Greg can tell more about what happened on the ground.
Good evening, sir, and add a little bit more detail to Emily's answer.
By Greg, just a little.
Just a little bit, just a tiny bit. Just before the shelter began, we worked with Sacramento Covered and their community health workers in the direct vicinity around the shelter to locate people who were chronically homeless or just homeless in the general vicinity and willing to go to the shelter once the doors opened. So that way, they could begin laying the foundation for all of the services those individuals would need once the doors opened. So day one, we had a contingent of 25 individuals very close to the shelter within walking distance who we were able to bring to it.
Okay. So the people who are coming from the hospitals, the people who are really costing us, we didn't target them for this program?
So the hospital thing, so we didn't directly target them for the shelter. However, because we aligned the shelter program with the pathways to health and home, there is a natural connection. It is not, to Councilmember Ashby's point, it is correct that A, an emergency room social worker cannot make a direct connection into our shelter. And there's sort of two reasons for that. First of all, there's a logistical reason of having multiple entry points, but it's also because folks who are exiting hospitals oftentimes need some recuperative care, and so there is existing 32 beds in our community for recuperative care for folks like that. And many of our folks, not many, but a small handful of folks in our shelter had passed through that recuperative care beds. In addition, as Andrew said, 118 of the folks were enrolled in pathways, and while not all of them may have made a direct exit from the hospitals, they all have been identified as frequent users of the hospitals. And as we increase our ability with pathways, I think that that segment of the population, if this type of shelter continues, will increase accordingly.
That recuperative care thing may not be working so well. We just had Laura Whiz in here last week who left the hospital with a double mastectomy. She started her chemo, and she was dumped off, and no one knew anything about where she was going to sleep, and she spent several nights in the car. So that part of it, I guess, like all of it, all of this has to be fine-tuned. Mr. Mayor, I think Councilmember Ashby is right. It's the 20 million. We got to find it. Let me know what we can do.
We're going to raise it, and let's remember a couple things. We, even though, I think we have to act as if we are in charge of our own destiny here. We can't rely on others, but there are plenty of other opportunities. This state play, the Big 11 mayors, of which I now chair, for $1.5 billion is very real because there's interest throughout the entire state because every city's dealing with this. If we get discretionary resources, you know, our share, we can use that for capital. There's also, as, I forget who said it, one of the, there's also SB 2 and SB 3 which have been passed. The SB, the bond needs to be passed by the voters, but it will be in November. We'll get our share of that. We'll get our share of the real estate transfer tax. I mean, there's real dollars coming down that we can corral here. Plus, we're going to raise $20 million to expand triage capacity to, to have a rental assistance fund like the kind Vice Mayor Hanson talked about so that we're actually intervening with people who are on that edge so that they don't become homeless. And then we're going to supplement the vouchers, which we're going to need to do to induce landlords to rent to people. And it makes me want to say one other thing, I'm sorry. You know, there's a lot of issues now with our healthcare partners, right? And certainly accountability is important, and some of what's been reported has to be addressed, but I got to tell you something, these folks are our partners here, too. And the way to turn that old mess and controversy into a win for everybody in this community is to get them and our development community and the private sector to participate in helping raise this $20 million so that they have alternatives to emergency rooms so that when they discharge people, there's a triage shelter or permanent housing. We're going to, we're going to do this. We're going to do it.
We're all from left.
I know. We're all, we're all in it together, and it's a team. Okay, Councilman Chenier.
Thanks, Mayor. Couple comments and then actually one request as we go forward. First of all, I just want to start where you ended. The hospital systems have been great partners in this, and I want to recognize Sutter's lead investment in the $20 million that we all know we need to raise of $5 million. I think that's important. And they've also, since the case last week, been in contact with my office and Steve's office, are putting together a kind of wealth of information about their protocols, on how people get discharged and what's going on. So that conversation is going to happen, and I think they're very, very serious about it and want people to understand how it all works. So it's, I think, not as straightforward as some people think because people have personal choice once they're discharged, there's all kinds of things. You know, on the comments for myself on this, first of all, I want to thank our staff. I think you guys have done a great job, and PD as well, and our community partners and VOA, where we will continue to work with you, and I think you guys have done a fabulous job. I want us to be really careful about, as we look at these numbers, the numbers, I think, are really good and better than I would expect for two months, but it's only two months. So we can't get carried away with where we are. We really need to get a lot more history into this, and I agree with you that we don't know. I mean, there's all kinds of reasons, it could be up or down. It may be more police presence as a beginning, but I think over time, as we really get into this and learn and continue to evolve and get better at what we're doing, and as VOA gets better at what it's doing within the context of the services that we're providing, we'll have a much better handle on where we are. So I'm hoping, so I think this was a really important evening and presentation to have. I don't know when the next one is, if it's six, you know, if you're really starting April 1st and you want to give it maybe a quarter after that. So if we're back in July or August for another update, I think there we'll really start to have the numbers that we can rely on and see how it goes through the summer. So that's kind of looking back. I just want us to be careful and not get carried away with where we are. I do think, and frankly, personally, as I said, the numbers are actually better than I would have thought they would be considering this was something brand-new that we've just basically opened the doors for. What I'd also request is, as, though, as some of my colleagues have been the same, been out in the neighborhoods quite a bit lately, and as the mayor goes, he spent an hour with me one day. The number-one issue people talk about is homelessness. I mean, it's a public opinion polling, but at the door, there's, that is the first question probably 75% of the people ask me. So there's a couple of things that I think are important. One is, I think we are doing a lot, particularly for a city, and I don't think we're getting that message out because of the 75% of the people who ask me what we're doing, none of them know what we're doing. And, you know, for the investments that we've made and for the amount of work we've done, we need to get that message out better. So that's one thing, and I know we've talked about that a little bit. Frankly, I think we need a strategic plan around communications because this is the number-one issue for people, and they need, if we are going to ask their help, which we are in the long run in a lot of ways, they need to be on board with the plan, and they're not on board if they don't know what's happening. The other thing that's important is, I know that we have around the city pockets of homelessness that are much worse than others, right? We have, there are homeless probably in every neighborhood these days, there's no question about that. But if you look at places like Stockton Boulevard, where we and the county intersect, if you look at some places around Meadowview, where, you know, I was down at the Pennell Center the other day, and there are huge amounts of homelessness there, and certainly up on the rivers. What I'd like to see is, if you were putting together five or six teams of outreach workers, how are you going to sequence those into the neighborhoods and into these areas of homelessness that are particularly difficult? I mean, I would love to be able to sit down with one of my neighborhood associations and saying, "This is when we are going to target your area." "This is when we are going to target your area," so that they will know. And this is part of the communication thing, but I think we need a much better way of talking to our neighborhoods, because, you know, to a person, really, people are sympathetic and want to help and feel horrible about the situation, but also understand that they live in the neighborhoods and it's affecting them in lots of ways, most of which are negative. So I think bringing that message to the neighborhoods, like, I would love to know, "When will we get to Stockton Boulevard?" So that when Eric and I are out there talking to our neighbors in Tahoe Park and Colonial Heights, we can say, "You know what? August is when we get here," or "When we do this." So I think communicating with us, so we can communicate to our constituents around that plan, is going to be incredibly important. That's the main thing I wanted to bring up. I think you're doing a great job. We need to do more. There's no question about it. I am very much in favor, if whatever it costs us, we cannot put 200 people out on the streets. So moving that forward until we get a permanent triage center, I think we just have to keep it open. And I'm, you know, willing to make that, it's a balancing act for our budget, certainly, but I think that's really important that we continue to do it. So that's where my vote will be when that comes up. And I know Mr. Chan is turning over cushions to find the money to be able to do that. I know. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Couple more comments, and I got one closer, but go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. It is absolutely true that our city budget can't sustain this kind of outflow. If you look at the San Antonio Center for the homeless, they have a capacity of about 1,600 people. They raised $56 million of private money to open that shelter. We absolutely need private sector partners. We won't be able to do this with our general fund. That being said, this first attempt at 24/7 triage was a proof of concept, so that we could learn the things we needed to learn, so that VOA could understand how to deal with a very difficult population. Even Amani Suarez, who's been in this game for 30 years, told me that this was a very tough project. It is, because we started to serve the hardest-to-serve people first. It was an ambitious goal, and once again, it's working. So we need to go out and we need to find those partners. And Sutter Health is a really great first step. They understood years ago that the impacts to their emergency rooms was so severe that they were willing to put up $5 million and say, "Let's match this, because we need to start working on the homelessness problem." We've got a great start, and we will do what we need to do to keep this work moving forward, because it's what we have to do. And Jay's comments are very salient. People do deserve to have an idea when they might get a little bit alleviation of the homelessness issue in their neighborhood, but the fact of the matter is, that's capacity-driven. And unless we really substantially improve our capacity and follow it up with the attendant dwellings that we need to build, we can't really get there. So we know what we have to do. The path is laid out before us. It's going to take a lot of money. It's going to take a lot of political will. It's going to take a lot of volunteerism. All of these things combined will lead us to success. And I'm just, I just got to say, I'm extremely happy that we started down this path.
Thank you, Jeff. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to go back to something Councilmember Chenier said, because I think it's important to go back to. The concentration, when we did the point-in-time count, we got a map, and Emily, I don't think you probably have it at the ready. You probably don't carry it in your pocket. We got a map of where we counted homeless people. And 60%, something like that, of the region's homeless people were living in the central city. So I don't want to lose sight of what's going on in all these important other neighborhoods and the impacts that they're facing, but also, just on behalf of my constituents, and I include in that statement the people who are homeless, who are on the streets. The crisis is on City Hall's front doorstep every day. And as much as I want to help the neighborhoods and the people you're talking about, I think it's an embarrassment to us as a city that literally our front yard and our City Hall is surrounded by something that we cannot change. We have not found a way to change, and we have not found a way to help those people. So it is a clarion call to us all to figure out the best and most effective way to partner and do it. But I cannot walk away tonight, living in Alkali Flat, knowing that my neighborhoods bear such a significant impact. It's not the only, but it is the most significant.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Councilmember Gueda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, one, I think everything's been said here about where we could do better. But I just can't stress enough what Councilmember Chenier brought up about how we communicate with the public. And I mentioned this earlier, that we need to do as a city a better job. And Mr. City Manager, I think this is a charge that we have to figure out how, through our public information officers, we get the right information out. And when I get questions from residents saying, "Is it true that after 23 hours that the triage center buys a taxi or gives a light rail ticket so that people can end up at the Rayleigh's in College Glen?" And that's a real question that got up, to the point where our own city staff was getting those questions. So there's something going on where we're actually not getting the right information out. And out of all the newspaper articles that, you know, the Bee's been doing on the journalism front, the story is usually always drafted after the fact, but the public always gets a different message of what we've been doing before that, before we even take an action. And so I think the important thing that we do is, we actually framed the public what we have been doing. I mean, the fact that we've got the one triage center, we did the whole person care, we're doing the RFI. All of these pieces, this is something that we have to, as a city, show the investment we put in there. Because in these conversations, the rest of the city, and we, at least in mine, the southeast corner of the city, they see, you know, what's happening around Railroad Boulevard as something that's not affecting them, when in realities, if we get this right, if we get this method right, then it can help the entire city. So I think all of these pieces are interconnected. So I think on the communication front, that's critical. The second piece, I want to go back to Ms. Sebastian. I think, you know, one, I think, I appreciate your testimony today. You know, I highly respect you. You've been a champion for affordable housing at the statewide level and for those communities and rural communities. I know you've been championing their plight to make sure that they have respectable places to live. So I want to thank you for all the work you've done there. And I think your message that I think you said that I was getting from your letter is, we have to do, we have to do a better job of communicating with our constituents of the process. And that is, that goes back to what we do as our communication plan. So if, from the onset, we're not figuring out what those feedback loops are and those mechanisms to talk to our neighbors, I think we're going to have a challenge, regardless if we raise the $20 million. I think we're going to have a challenge executing what we're trying to do. No other city, and I'll tell you this, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for pointing me on the League of Cities Board, and I'm on the city and county joint task force for the state. I got to tell you, no other city is, right now, I see being this creative and innovative as we are, and our information is being used. Of course, the city of LA will say that they're doing a lot, but they're just a bigger city, so when they do a tax revenue bond, they get a lot all at once. But I would question that they're as creative as we are here. So I want to thank you for that. And I clearly see that Sacramento is in a good step forward. We just got to get that message out.
I do. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Can we, before I make my comments, can we hear from the representative from Volunteers of America?
Yeah, of course. Honorable Rachel, come on up. That'd be great. Real heroin.
I have way more than an hour. What can I, in short order, give you? I mean, I've heard so much here tonight, some of it I really want to correct, but I will say this. It has been an absolutely remarkable experience to be involved with this triage shelter. I had no doubt that we could do it, but after 30 years, like Jeff said, that's my little secret, Jeff. So thanks for putting it out there. I feel like I have learned as much as I did when I was that very young 25-year-old woman who just came into this work. And it has been moving, and it has been eye-opening, and it has been profound. And it will inform the way that we do business moving forward with this population. I think all of us. What I've seen are people who have been on the street for 40, 38, 36, 33 years. I have a list, if I had more time, of the 20 people that Andrew was talking about, who are the highest duration homeless, and they add up to 434 years. So these are not people like the families at St. John's. These are going to be people who are a heavier lift and who are going to be a lot more needy. I came to the council meeting late today because I was visiting one of the men who has moved me so much. I've spoken with Councilmember Harris about him. He's moved me so much. He's been on the river for 40 years. He is a Vietnam War veteran, and he came back from Vietnam and pitched a tent out on the river, and 40 years have passed before he opened his eyes and realized he had been homeless for 40 years. And he came into the shelter on the first day that it opened, and 80 people came with him, because he just so happens to be one of the leaders of this group. And because we were able to touch the leader of this group, we were also able to touch 80 additional people. He went into permanent-supported housing two weeks ago, as a result of a lot of efforts from a lot of people. I was holding back tears today. He offered me a drink from his refrigerator. And he was showing me the pantry and how much food he had, and he wanted to show me his closet and all of the clothes that he had hung in there. And he told me that for the first few days, he actually had to pitch his tent inside the apartment, because after 40 years of living in a tent, he actually felt more safe inside the tent than he did inside those four walls. The history is a history of trauma, a huge history of trauma. And for most of the people that we're looking at, these very long-term chronically homeless, there are lots of health needs and lots of mental health needs and huge histories of trauma. We do bring in wraparound services. It was hard when we were putting this together, because we didn't know how many people were going to be pathways-eligible and not. So we took a little bit of a guess. But we do have case management services, very intensive, that aligns with the pathways case management services for the non-pathways clients. And that includes bringing in partner agencies from the VA, from Elica, from WellSpace, from the Guest House Clinic, from private psychiatrists, who are all working to connect, to triage and connect people to benefits. We also have done a great deal of work finding identification for people, connecting them with public benefits, Social Security. There were 18 veterans, 18, I think, right, 18. There were 18 veterans who were in this group, and four of them had 120 years homeless. They're all connected with the VA. I mean, I have some remarkable stories, and this is really moving. I feel like we've succeeded. I don't feel like there have been any fails. I feel that everything we've done has been a huge learning opportunity, and I hope to continue to do that.
You're fabulous, and so is your agency. So thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Let's get, Councilmember Jay, I think we're fine for now.
I think you-
He has a comment, and I think we're going to cut it down.
Kind of help me with my comment, because I think you said it much better than I ever could have. Is, I feel like we've succeeded. And we're talking about a progress report after 71 days that we're looking at. And although the numbers might not indicate success, and although the amount of money that we've spent is probably more than we'll ever be able to sustain, you can't say to any one of the 34 that have moved into housing that that was too much money to spend and that we didn't do it for the right reasons. And the stories that you talk about are remarkable, because once you get into this business and you help people to get to their goals in life, you just can't stop. You can't turn it on and off. I've been in this work way too long. My organization is right on Del Paso Boulevard at the Center for Fathers and Families, and we've seen the reduction in crime. We've seen less homelessness on the streets. We've seen people walking to get help. And we've seen the effect of the triage center that it's had on North Sacramento. So I've heard the public talk about it today. I know there'll be a meeting on Thursday, whether there be further conversation, but this has been a remarkable story and a remarkable success. And it has informed all of us on how to be better as we continue to provide triage centers to those who need it the most. And I applaud the mayor, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Warren, especially for leading this charge in the north area and taking on Sacramento's most vulnerable population. I mean, these are the hardest-to-reach that you could talk. And what shocked me was the number that are over the age of 50 and the number that even are over the age of 60. And I'm not quite there yet, but, well, I am. But, yes, I am. I was just shocked when I read people who are my age are living like this, but with a little bit of help, with a little bit of support, with taking the barriers away, we can help them to have a life that they can live and enjoy for years to come. So I just, to me, if you take money out of the equation, if you stop looking at the money, there's no question, and I know you can't do that, but there's no question this is a tremendous success. And I have all the confidence in the world that, together with the mayor, we will raise $20 million, or we will raise whatever amount of money is necessary to keep this triage center up and running, and maybe others as well that we can put along the way. I'm just really excited about what we've learned and the success that we've had. And I thank the Police Department for helping us with everything they've done, for the outreach, for keeping us safe. I thank all the volunteers and the employees who worked at the triage center that took care of the pets and took care of those who were housed there, and all the feeding teams, everything that took place in order to make that successful. I think we have a great model here. And if we continue with this model for any period of time, we'll not only inform Sacramento, but we'll inform the entire state and the country. And so I'm excited.
Thanks, Rick. Thank you. Final comments, if I may. Well, thank you. So... Thanks, Jay. I've got for a long time. It's important to celebrate success, obviously. It really is. But it's also important to never let up, because this is a volume issue. Every one of these people are human beings, and we've got thousands of people that we need to help. And it's best illustrated, I think, you're right, you go tour this triage shelter. It's not a thing of beauty physically. There are people crowded in, right? And we have partitions, and there is dignity, and yes, there are the dogs, which, by the way, is purposeful, because it's the only way people, many people, will enter a shelter. But here's the real truth of the matter. If you size this the way you would want VOA, I know you would size it at 125 or 150. I know you would. But you're taking in 200, and that's the number that has to be until we build more capacity, because we talked about not letting 200 people out there. We're not going to let 50 people out there. And so our focus needs to be on every human being, but it also needs to be on volume. That's capacity. And that's building the capacity to make sure that we can dramatically reduce the numbers of people on the street. That's what we're going to try to do. I want to just back up Jay's point, because it was in my notes, too. When we roll out whole-person care on April 1st, the most important thing we have to do is to be transparent and clear to the public about where these additional, approximately 30 outreach workers, I've been briefed, five to six new teams, where they are going to be focusing their attention. And then if they're going to shift, you know, after X number of weeks, where they're going to shift to. And the public needs to know that, because that is the key confidence builder here. So people know that we are genuinely trying and having success, yes, where the problem is greatest, but throughout our entire community. Finally, direction of staff, because that's what they're looking for here tonight. direction of staff, because that's what they're looking for here tonight. I would ask the staff to come back within the next week to two weeks, with alternatives, or the best alternative, for ensuring that the 200 people or so who are at Railroad Avenue tonight are not turned back out to the street. Period. Direction enough?
That is.
Okay. Thank you. That's the end of the item. We really appreciate everybody's time and attention. Thank you. Okay, that's the end of the council agenda for the evening. We've got council ideas and questions, or comments, and a lot of great things going on in the community. Who's up? Councilman Harris.
Thanks again, Mayor. A couple of quick ones here. You know, one of the biggest joys of being a council member is dedicating new park improvements, or park builds. And so this Saturday, March 3rd, at 1:00 PM, at Glen Hall Park and River Park, my own neighborhood, we're going to dedicate our recent improvements, which included adult exercise equipment, and benches, some sprinkler improvements, as well as a canopy over the picnic area. And then, once again, next Saturday, March 10th, will be our brand-new revitalized parade in the Natomas area on North Gate Boulevard, starts at 9:00 PM at Smythe the Canniby, and continues up to Rio Tierra Junior High School. I really hope to see you there.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Vice, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to give you four announcements of events that are happening in District 7. I want to let all those who are looking to put furniture in their house, that RC Willie's grand opening event will take place tomorrow.
RC Willie?
RC Willie, Wednesday, the 28th, from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM. It's going to take place in the Delta Shores Shopping Center. And their address is 8340 Delta Shores. But you can't miss it, because it's the only two-story building in the entire complex. So come on out to the grand opening of RC Willie. And two, we're going to spotlight two businesses in the month of March. On March the 1st, which is Thursday, we're going to spotlight Quickleys, which is located at 4650 Mack Road. And then on March the 8th, we're going to spotlight Leland's Insurance, which is located at 910 Florin Road, Suite Number 108. Want to come out and support our local businesses, and make sure you know that they are there. And then finally, Seussical. Seussical, the mayor and I will be doing the Seussical Story Hour at the Robbie Waters Library, and that's going to take place Saturday, March 3rd, at 10:00 AM. And the mayor's going to come dressed up in a Seussical suit. He's going to have his hat on, and his outfit, and everything. And he's going to look very Seussical. So I'm going to be there as well, and we're going to have a great time reading to the kids.
Please take lots of photos.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Guerra?
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Just some, save the dates here. The, and this one's also for the mayor here, the College Glen Little League Parade on Saturday, March 10th. Hope you'll join us again. Thanks for coming last time, at 8:00 AM. That's, we're going to begin at the Rayleigh Shopping Center on Folsom Boulevard. Come out, it'll be a fun day for the Little Leagues, starting in the parade. Also, we're going to do a Tahoe Park Easter egg hunt on Saturday, March 24th, at 9:00 AM at Tahoe Park. Bring your family and friends. That's Saturday, March 24th, at 9:00 AM. And then the Avondale Glen Elder and the Southeast Village Neighborhood Association are going to have their egg extravaganza the following weekend, on March 31st, at 11:00 AM, at the George Sims Community Center. And that's all I have today.
Councilmember Jennings, do you have one more thing?
Yeah, just one more. I apologize, but the Job Readiness Workshop for Youth is coming up, and that's going to take place on Saturday, March 10th. If our youth need help preparing for the city of Sacramento's upcoming job, youth, youth job and resource fair, they can come to the half-day free employment prep workshop. And that's going to be right here at City Hall, at 915 I Street, from 1:00 to 4:30 PM on Saturday, the 10th.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. I have two quick announcements. First, we'll see who does best as dressed in Dr. Seuss wear. Friday, I'll be donning my Horton Here's a Who hat, full elephant ears and trunk, with my pop-up version of the book. So we'll see who the kids like more, myself, or you all down in the pocket. But on another front, March 8th, the Greater Sacramento Urban League is holding a diversity job fair with over 40 employers at the Sacramento Convention Center in Exhibit Hall D, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. You can visit the Greater Sacramento Urban League website, gsul.org, to sign up or get more information. Thanks so much. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.